Commissioners.
Okay.
It is the appointed time. All right, everybody ready? We will go ahead and call the Budget Workshop to order. We're going to start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces. That'll be followed by an invocation by Chaplain Lou Trof from the Indian River County Jail, followed by a pledge of allegiance by myself. If everybody would please rise.
Father, your word tells us in Luke 14, "For which of you desiring to build a tower does not first sit down and count the cost, whether he has enough to complete it?" As these men and women today sit and consider each project and expenditure, we pray for your wisdom and your guidance. Let them not make decisions based solely upon their wisdom, but with your wisdom. Guide them through this meeting today and in the days ahead. Be with them as they guide this beautiful community in which we live. And, Lord, we give thanks for their service, both individually and collectively as a group. They've done a great job for this community. We're proud of the service they've offered, and we continue to bless them in days ahead. And we ask this in your son's name, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Commissioners, just before we get started, I know this is going to be a long day, so if anybody needs to take a break at any point, just signal to me and let me know. I will, I will try to be timely on the breaks, but sometimes you know how it is. All right, with that, we will move on to the general overview. Mr. Administrator, take it away.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board members, citizens of Indian River County, as well as our constitutional officers. Collaboration, one of our newly adopted core values, working together cooperatively, united in a purpose to serve the community. Developing a budget focused on meeting the needs of our community exemplifies the collaborative manner in which our proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget was formulated. I want to thank the Board for your leadership and direction in identifying goals and priorities during our strategic planning process. I would also like to thank our constitutional officers, state agencies, and department directors for their commitment to meeting the needs of our residents. Balancing the need to provide local government services while maintaining fiscal discipline is no easy task, and it takes a team for that to happen. This year's budget was developed with an emphasis on customer service, investing in our employees, training and development, finalizing and implementing our strategic plan. We also continue to invest in the organization while ensuring we maintain and enhance the delivery of core services and address infrastructural and capital needs. Employee retention, recruitment, and compensation are at the forefront. Position vacancies continue to challenge county operations. Implementing the employee compensation and classification study is a priority to ensure the county is competitive regionally and with our peers. It represents a critical investment in both our employees and our organization. The proposed budget includes funding for the compensation study. Costs associated with implementing the study and providing future negotiated general wage increases with our collective bargaining units will total more than $8.6 million. And we are budgeting a contingency to address any issues that may arise when implementing a compensation plan that affects approximately 1,000 employees. We implemented last year, or this current year, a restructuring that created the Community Services and Natural Resources Departments, added an Assistant County Administrator and County Administration Ombudsman, which I am pleased, all of these positions have been filled. The proposed budget includes the creation of the Building and Facility Services Department to improve our service to our external and internal customers. The new department will include functions of building and permitting, fire prevention, facilities management, and a capital projects division. The intent is to integrate and promote greater collaboration in the building and fire prevention review and inspection process to better manage that process, plan, review, and inspections. The budget also includes a Chief Plans Examiner and Chief Building Inspector. Internally, there is a need to better manage our existing facilities and assets along with dedicated staff to manage the county's capital projects. We are also creating an Economic Development Specialist position, proposing to create an Economic Development Specialist position. The county will continue its relationship with the Indian River Chamber of Commerce, but in a more collaborative manner. They will continue to serve as the county's formal economic development organization, and they will, and they are due to replace Helene as she retires at the end of the year. The county is actively soliciting a consultant firm to study and develop an economic development plan, and the new Economic Development Specialists would be responsible to coordinate, implement the plan, as well as perform traditional economic development functions in collaboration and coordination with the Indian River County Chamber. In past year, we have undertaken several critical plans and studies, evaluating our comprehensive plan, analyzing the urban services boundary, assessing our impact fees. The Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Stormwater Master Plan, vulnerability assessment, mandatory protection plan, beach preservation plan, and the Integrated Utilities Master Plan have been initiated. Except for the Integrated Utilities Master Plan, all these plans are underway and expected to be completed during the first, second quarter of the new fiscal year. It certainly has been a year of investing and planning for the future, lest I forget, the Board, if you recall, adopted the Indian River Lagoon Plan just before the beginning of the current fiscal year. It was in September last year. Fire stations 15, 16, 17, and 18 are in various stages of planning, of the planning process. Fire Station 11 renovations, albeit with a hiccup, but the Board took action the other day. We prepared a letter to the county attorney and sent that out. And Station 7 is next in line. And we are pleased to report they were contracted to purchase property for Station 15 that will enhance our response time for the Vera Lake Estate subdivision and the surrounding areas. In addition to evaluating our development review process, 650 employees participated in online customer service training, and we are scheduled to hold onsite, in-person customer service training for 200 of our public-facing employees and are working to schedule training for an additional 100 employees. We've also hosted onsite training such as building highly effective teams for approximately 80 employees, managers, key personnel, directors. And then finally, key members of the leadership team have graduated from or currently enrolled in the National Association of Counties and Professional Development Academy's High Performance Leadership Program, and we'll have another group begin in September. So with that, we're going to move on to the budget, the budget overview. So the total budget is, you know, is $524,719,750, which represents $107.9 million decrease from the amended budget. The original budget was 500, for this year, was $506,901,540, so that would represent a $17.8 million increase, or 3.5%. Some highlights, the tax roll increased countywide is 10.3%, the unincorporated area 10%. This is also the first year of our environmentally sensitive land acquisition bond, and the milage levy is 0.0639. And we received a AA+ rating from S&amp;P Global Ratings, and we close, or we will close later this morning during this process, the final act of closing will occur for $24.8 million of bonds to acquire environmentally sensitive lands. The sheriff funding, the recommended 4.78 million increase, it was agreed by the sheriff, is a reduction from the initial request of 9.7 million from the original budget. It provides continued funding for our school resource officer, splitting that cost with the school district. The cost to implement a compensation study is, as I mentioned earlier, is about a little more than $8.6 million. The retirement rate increase, I need to emphasize this, and I have a knot with an underline there, and I want to thank Commissioner Laura for his, his detail because Scrivener or myself left out the word "not" in the budget message. The, the increase for retirement of 1.254, or $1,254,455 countywide is for the county, but not, does not include the constitutional, our constitutional officers. Our OPEB savings, other post-employment benefits, as you know, the plan is now funded, and now every year we just pay into it to maintain the current year's amount, so we don't accrue liabilities in the future. That amount is $506,170. Everyone throughout the county saw a reduction in their OPEB, you know, budget line item this year because of the plan being fully funded. Workers' compensation is increasing. This does include the county constitutional officers, and that's $1,135,137. And for full-time positions, you know, the, the budget reflects a net increase of 37 full-time positions, as well as an increase of 1.9 full-time constitutional officers, or a total of 38.9 increase in full-time positions. So this chart depicts the strategic goal allocation. The new, with the new budget request, new budget requests of more than $5,000 were required to demonstrate alignment with our strategic planning goals adopted. Additionally, all requests were prioritized, whether they were imperative, essential, important, or desired. Just to clarify, to expound on that, imperative would be a must-do. Projects or programs could not reasonably be postponed because they'd be harmful or have undesirable consequences, think public safety, health, or welfare, or a mandate. Essential, should-do, projects or programs that specifically address clearly demonstrated needs or objectives, things alignment with the, the county's mission, vision, values, and goals. The strategic plan, and a deferment would result in severe degradation of public facilities and/or reduction of level of service. And then priority three, important, they could do, they could, they could, they would benefit Indian River County, but they may be delayed without detrimental effect to county services. And then priority four, would be desired or nice to do. It should be noted here, as you can see, the breakout infrastructure is the dominant expenditure of $29.8 million overall. Governance, or public safety, 5.5 million. Governance, 3.2. And again, these are new budget requests. These are not what was already budgeted. But I would like to note that, you know, many times a, a, a project might address multiple strategic goals. For example, we have many infrastructure projects that affect both quality of life and environment, but we classified them in their primary goal. And this does not reflect, you know, the closing on the $24.8 million of bonds for environmental land acquisitions. So the general fund taxable value, happy to report, this is the sixth year of maintaining the milage rate, proposing at 3.5475 mils. And according to the Florida Department of Revenue, this represents the sixth lowest general fund milage of all 67 Florida counties. The valuable, the, the valuation has increased from $26.5 million to $29.3 million, of which new construction accounted for approximately $655, 665 million of that amount. According to Florida Tax Watch, the average tax property tax milage rates for Indian River County, including all jurisdictions and the school district, for fiscal year 2023 ranked 54th at 14.0775 mils, compared with the state average of 16.508 mils.
If you have any questions as we go through this, jump in.
Yeah, just, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, John. Just to reflect back on OPEB, I think this body should know that most counties and most cities that are in the FRS do not fund their other post-employment benefits, and we've been doing that for over two decades, which is pretty refreshing. But my question, John, would be, at what point do the, do the departments and constitutionals that are continuing to contribute to OPEB, how long is that going to last, or is this an ongoing maintenance cost?
It is an ongoing maintenance cost, and to your earlier point, there's probably, I don't know, I'm not aware of any, there may be, maybe a handful in the state that actually are that fiscally conservative in terms of funding that liability, because that's a long-term accrued liability. So from that going forward, because everybody saw a precipitous drop in their contributions this year, going forward, you will see just the amount that would be accrued for that year being placed into the, into the fund, so we don't incur or add to our, you know, liability that would be outstanding.
Right, so the other post-employment benefits, for those that don't know, are for employees that retire prior to Medicare age. So the county will supplement their insurance benefits until they reach that age. So again, we're one of the few counties that are fully funded.
And it also takes in, I think, into account the, like, if, if somebody has the maximum number of vacation hours, look at any, any liability once that person, you know, retires, any liability they have if they're owed hours for vacation or, or a payout for sick. It looks at all the benefits that would be provided to them after they retire. So we're, so again, we're not taffing to then try to budget more money unnecessarily when somebody retires. We actually, it's, it's there.
Correct, thank you.
So historically, the, the, the ad valorem revenue, just to give you, it goes from 20, I'm sorry here, am I on the right page? Oh, so for, the one thing I want to note on this, because we already mentioned the military and the population, obviously we have a population of about 167,000. It's estimated that in 2025, it could be up to about 173,100 by the University of Florida Business of Economic Business Research. So as our population grows, so do the demands for services. And so with that, the ad valorem revenues that'll be collected are roughly 179 or 189 million dollars. But just some context, for growth in property tax levities, levies, according to the Florida Tax Watch, from fiscal year 2008 to fiscal year 2023, Indian River County ranked 51st at 21.7% growth, you know, during that time period, 15 years. And for total property tax levies per $1,000 of personal income for fiscal year 2023, Indian River County also ranked 21st, where $22.07 per $1,000 of personal income was dedicated towards property tax. Excluding general obligation debt related to the voter-approved environment, the environmental land acquisition bonds, the total ad valorem revenue is 179.83 million. So now we're going to review the military. So as we mentioned, we're maintaining the general fund military at 3.5475, there's no increase. The, the amount of the milage rate for the land acquisition bond that we're closing on is .0639. That roughly will, that will cover the debt service, which is roughly about $1.8 million. The subtotal countywide milage is going from 3.5475 with the voter-approved debt of, to 3.6114, or a 1.8% increase. The municipal service taxing unit military is remaining the same, proposed 1.1506 mils. And the emergency service district, again, proposed to be remain the same at 2.3531 mils. Aggregate milage, and this is used, this is not what everybody will, will see, but this is used for comparison purposes, you know, we are actually going from 6.1307 aggregate milage to 6.1198, which represents 18 hundredths of a percent decrease. So this shows where the county stands in relationship to our surrounding county and other peer counties in terms of where we are in milage. Last year, Brevard, Brevard has a charter amendment, a charter cap, where they cannot increase their revenues by more than 3% across the board, so they have to lower their milage. And so we are now, again, 6, but as you can see, we have a very healthy and, you know, conservative military, you know, in terms of, for the general fund. So this chart depicts the overall breakout of general fund expenses, of which 73% of this expenses are mandate-related. 61.2% of the general fund expenses fund our constitutional offices and their operations, and the sheriff's office alone counts for 53.3% of the general fund expenses. This year, the sheriff's request for, excuse me, recommended request of 4.8 million for the sheriff's office is substantially less than the initial, his initial request of 9.8 million. As we've discussed individually, and I've also had conversations with the sheriff, the county would not be able, we not, we don't foresee we would be able to continue to support such significant increases in the, in the future. Increases at these levels are financially unstable and will place pressure on the county in terms of military increases if the amounts continue to come in at a higher-than-expected number. So a lot of people say, well, what's that mean to me? You know, what's the final impact? You know, that's milage stuff, all that, you know, yet that's all that county gobbledygook. So what does it mean to me? So we take the average, the typical house, take the average value, that's, we derive that information from the Indy County Property Appraiser as of June 2024, and the, the average assessed value is $356,128. When you less out the, or you account for the Save Our Homes increase, and then you less out the $50,000 home set exemption, the taxable value is $306,128. So for the general fund, that with maintaining the military and largely due to the, the growth in values, you're looking at a $36.80, you know, increase for the year, or 3.51%. We've already mentioned the land acquisition bond, that's a brand-new milage, you know, to support the bonds that we just, it will be issuing, $19.1956. So for the resident of Indian River shores for the upcoming year, you know, it's, you obviously would multiply this by your value, if you will, but, but at $306,056.36. The emergency service district, which covers all the county with the exception of Indian River shores, with their milage, you're looking at a $24.41 increase. And then, so for, if you look at all the other incorporated areas, you, the increase over the year would be $80.77. And then for those in the unincorporated area where we, you know, you know, levy, the municipal service taxing unit, it's an additional $11.93. So really, it's $92.70, you know, in the, for the unincorporated area. Again, keeping in mind, you have roughly just, you know, just almost under $20 that's going to be related to the paying of the debt for the environmental lands acquisitions. So the general fund budget overview, I mentioned already, the ad valorem tax increases, or the total increases, the rolls 10.3%. That'll bring in about 2.9.2 million, assuming the collection's at 95% at the same military, and we'll say that we have exceeded that 95% generally, so we feel very comfortable with that. The military, again, we are recommending no change from last year, keeping it at 3.5475 mils. Our constitutional officers increases, about 6.3% of the general fund, are $5.3 million. Children's service funding is increasing by $233,415, or 8.4%. And then the state mandated retirement rate for the general fund, increase of $340,069, or 17.9%, and that does not include constitutionals. We'll correct that in the, the budget message before the final budget's printed. The workers' comp for general fund, the increase is $226,608, or 24.3%. That does include our constitutionals. We've had a good discussion on the OPEB contribution impact. There's been a savings this year, so it's about the 49% compared to what we're paying last year. And then the compensation study impact to the general fund is about $1.4, $1.44 million. I mentioned we're adding, you know, 38.9 positions, 1.9 for the constitutionals, and the remainder for the, the Board, but only 15.9 of those are related to the general fund. The others are in either utilities, utilities, building permitting, enterprise fund, the, then the big one. Thank you, emergency services. We're hiring eight fire, four fire medics, and then three fire sergeants, then a fleet services, or fleet technician. So general fund expenses by category, this pie chart gets a little bit more granular in depicting expenses. Again, our constitutional offices, offices for their operations account for 61.2% of general fund expenses, and the Board, 21.3%. What does that mean? For every $100 of general fund expenses, $21.30 support county operations and services provided to the residents. Again, this is, this, this slide also depicts the general fund milit history, as you can see, six years, it's remaining stable. But at the 3.475 rate, it is a 7.77% incre, or it's, it's above the rollback rate, you know, so that's important to note. And then general fund expenses. So what I'm going to do here, I won't go line by line, go, yes, sir.
Thank you, John. One thing that stuck out to me with the staffing of the 37 new positions, I was just curious on, and I'm certain that the staff researched this, Parks and Recreation requested 11. requested eleven, and it was recommended at five, and something important, emergency services asked for twenty-seven positions, and it was recommended at eight. And I'm curious of how you came up with that number, seeing how emergency services funded separately.
Yes. So what we did this year, is a little, little bit of a change, and I think it worked out well, is in advance of the budget, you know, submission, we asked all the directors to submit their staffing requests for, you know, if they had additional requests for personnel in advance, and then provide the justification, they provided those to me. We reviewed them, and then I asked them to prioritize them, and then we made decisions, you know, related to whether, like, you know, take Beth, you know, with the Parks and Rec, she had some that were high priority, medium priority, low priority. So we could evaluate whether or not they were, you know, at this point in time. For instance, last year, for Parks and Rec, there was four positions added last year. For emergency services, there was thirteen point three-three positions added last year. So we were trying to balance it out as we looked down, looking at the FY twenty-four numbers, and then looking also at what, what was being asked right now. I acknowledge that, you know, I would say, to use a, a term, that, that's, that's been used before, the organization is undernourished, but I don't think you can do it all in one year or two years, I think you had to, you know, bite that elephant, eat that elephant one bite at a time. And so I think we, what we want to make sure is that we don't put too many positions on to where all of a sudden then we face an issue, we want to make sure we're being fiscally, you know, sustainable, that we could sustain those positions over the long term and not find ourselves hiring positions where maybe three years down the road, we're like, wait, we got to back off. Because it is a very, it is probably the most uncomfortable and very heart-wrenching, you know, decisions if you have to cut, because normally where you're going to get money is you can cut operations to some degree, but it usually comes back to the, the largest amount that you have is your staff, your personnel, outside of some of the capital-intensive operations that we have. So we were being mindful of, you know, having a measured approach, and then also we asked them to prioritize what their needs were, and we generally met everybody's need that, as they prioritized them.
Okay, so they agreed on, on the eight?
Yes.
So what if we look at the funding sources, obviously different, different sources for emergency services versus parks?
Correct, they have, they have their own, the district funds, and I, I'll get into that with a specific amount, you know.
Right, because I'm just curious on, if we have positions and emergency services, we can't fill them, adding more positions, however we have openings, it could, it could be to do with compensation.
And I did look at a recent vacancy report, and I think there was a total of fifty-two positions across the, the county, largely public works, there's some in emergency, in emergency services, fire, many of them are either, they're waiting on the next recruitment, some are in line, so they are currently working to fill those positions. So we, we believe that will happen. I do think as we move towards implementing the compensation study and making us more competitive, that will help address some of the vacancies in terms of being able to offer a competitive, you know, salary and competitive benefits, I think that will help as well. It would have a huge impact. Money's not everything, I think culture beats money all the time, but you've got, money's important to people coming, and they want to be paid commensurate with where they would work somewhere else.
Right. I haven't seen the compensation study, but I'm assuming that emergency services is heavily involved in that.
So we are, we are currently negotiating, in negotiations with IAFF, we've had one meeting, they presented their proposal, and we're running some scenarios. Obviously, next year, they're open, they are up for a whole new contract, three, this is the last year of their current contract, and the only opener is the wager opener. We have that number, and we're working towards the percentage that they have provided, and we're evaluating and see, kind of make sure, because the more we can do now, the easier it would be for the next contract. And the same goes with the Teamsters, where they have a full contract up this year, so we're negotiating those. So that's why I mentioned, we also budgeted some of what have a contingency, if you will, related to the comp plan, the compensation study, in, in the event that some unforeseen compression issues arise, or maybe there's an inequity that exists, somebody needs, an E-six in one department compared to an E-six in another department, it's like, wait, I've been here this long, I do this, like, because invariably, at a thousand employees, you might miss one or two. And we want to make sure that we can rectify, make that, make those changes, and ensure that everybody is, we're, we're competitive within the market. That is, that is our priority, was this, the study, as well as looking at our, our lowest wage earners being the ones that benefit the most, and as you go up in salary, the potential for increase will be less, but there is a flat-line percent increase, I just don't want to divulge it right now because of the fact that we're in collective bargaining.
Okay.
Just a, oh, go ahead.
Along the same lines, last year during negotiations, an adjustment for appearances in emergency services was established. It does not appear that the estimated amount of individuals that were needed to offset those days are aligned with the projected personnel that is being requested.
Yes, so last year, largely the increase in personnel was predicated upon the fact that we were migrating and adding additional Kelly days, and it took into account, because the, the next round of Kelly days to be added is during this fiscal year, so actually, it, it would be subject to next year's contract if something else was to arise as it relates to the implementation or expansion of Kelly days for the fire rescue. So the, the previous year, the, I think it was, was it October that we implemented the new ones? The first set, and the next one that were, are, happened just, just this past month, June. So, so that's, that, those numbers, that when we added those thirteen positions, we added them in anticipation and to account for the expansion of Kelly days.
Right, but it gets another kick now.
But, but, yes, we had provided more people for the purposes of, obviously, there's going to be less people working, you know, on a, because of the Kelly days.
Thank you.
And I will say that the, the increase of the four fire medics and three rescue sergeants, that's to add an additional Bravo shift to cover the increase in call volume, and then when Station sixteen opens, that unit will be assigned to Station sixteen, so at the, at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
And then just for clarification purposes, the amount that's reserved in the budget for the anticipation, the anticipated implementation of the compensation study is a little over eight million dollars?
So we have, we have, we have a, a budget of about eight point six billion, and then we, we did set aside twenty percent in a reserve contingency account.
Okay.
You just mentioned compensation study, that's available now to us?
No, it, it's not, because it includes, it includes study data related to our unions, and therefore, we, we have to, that, the final is not, actually, we have an, an appointment, I think it's tomorrow, or maybe, no, Friday, related to evaluating some scenarios and how we're, because we're still trying to narrow down on how we can make sure, if you envision the organization as a triangle, you know, you have, you know, the higher you go up, but we've flipped the triangle upside down, and we're trying to look at the base, the top, making sure that the, meaning like, our lowest wage earners, they will benefit the most, because they, I'll just use, to give ten thousand dollars, a ten percent raise after you move them into the correct pay band, and give a ten percent raise to try to get penetration in the market, and so they're not being like, they're just starting at the bottom of the next pay, because if somebody else comes in and starts, well, that's not fair. So the idea is to try to get some range penetration, and so we're looking at the percentages as it relates to what, how high we can go, and if you, if, just for example, if, if you're looking at a director, if you gave ten thousand, a ten percent raise, you could, it could be anywhere between fourteen thousand, seventy thousand dollars a year. Well, somebody's making forty-five thousand dollars, that's forty-five hundred. So we're trying to adjust the rates proportionately to where, one, there's a base minimum of a, of a, a single-digit raise, and then there's a smaller increase, you know, for the higher salary, you know, employees.
Right, this was inverted. So.
It was very informative. Now, so the compensation study is done.
Well, actually, no, it's because we.
But you have a product.
We're, we, we do not have the final product, because we're still running the final scenarios with them as we've discussed, because we're trying to, again, we could take what they provided us, ask them to just give us the report, but we'd want to make sure that they can run the scenarios that we would fully, that can be implemented.
So what I'm hearing is, we're trying to make sure that the report reflects where we want to invest the dollars, that the report is reflective of the direction that we have given to you to go.
We're providing them a different option compared to just those simple options of like.
Well, I want to make sure that we're taking care of our frontline guys, and that we are taking care of the positions that we are having a hard time recruiting and retaining.
Yes.
The other positions, that can come at a different time, but if we have holes and we're having problems recruiting and retaining, whether it's with emergency services or a planning review, or some of the other areas that we are contracting out those services because we cannot bring people on board, that's where we need to be focusing to get those pay grades and benefits aligned with the private sector, so we can bring quality people on board. So as you move forward and have that meeting on Friday, I think that's what the commission has indicated as a whole and in private, I want to make sure that that's being conveyed to the group that's putting together this report, so when we get it back, they understand that where we want to focus is on those areas that we're having issues with and that we need to bring people on. And as you indicated, and I think Commissioner Laura just said, inverted triangle, the bottom first.
Yes.
Everybody else can hang out for a little bit.
Yes. So to, to your point, so yes, we have, we are presenting them, you know, an option that's outside of their different option to reflect that, and so, I mean, we looked at, you know, the organization as a whole, and then we started looking at, you know, the positions where they should go and the, the new pay bands, and now we're looking at, you know, those percentages that would apply to provide the larger percentage, again, you know, to our lowest, because they're the ones that are impacted the most right now with, with, with the, the economy that it is. I mean, so, so those are the ones, and this study, even though, during the study, it's still, we are still funding, you know, the annual, the, the anniversary increase. So they would get their, the adjustment, plus then when they hit their anniversary, they would get their anniversary increase as well, because we didn't want to, like, because that was one of the options, we'll just take what we have, and then just say, well, this year, we're not going to do an anniversary increase, and just give this raise, but we said, no, we need to do a raise, and retain that, because otherwise, we put ourselves, we kind of step back, because now we're behind the, the schedule, or behind the, we'd be defeating the purpose of trying to be competitive.
Right, and I think it's, we've had this conversation for a couple of years about how we are not competitive in certain areas on the employee, in the employment market, and if we want to reach our strategic goals and have that service excellence mission of Indian River County, it is imperative that we bring good, quality people on board, but that we're also rewarding the ones on the frontlines that are doing the hard work and interacting with our residents.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
What, how does this impact the area where we're, when we're talking about when we contract services out, like, we don't have enough engineers in public works, for say, or something like that, and we're actually farming it out? Can't we use that, that money to pull in and increase wages to attract?
So, well, that, that's the idea of the compensation study, because they look at our peer counties, and they, for some of the positions, they might look at the private sector. Let me, let me use building and permitting. You know, this year, we had to do a half-million-dollar adjustment, because the private vendor raised their rates from eighty-five dollars out, an hour to a hundred and ten dollars an hour. So we're up to one point six, one point six million dollars for seven and a half people. So I have tasked, you know, Andy, Nancy, and, and Scott, and then to come up with an optimal staffing plan, and to evaluate, I mean, what would the appropriate pay ranges be, based on the optimal staffing plan to cover our workload? What could we do? And because this is a critical-to-fill position, and sometimes, and I know people don't like it, but, you know, it's just that sometimes, you may, they may be making more, because right now, we're paying two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year for a private, you know, inspector or, or plans examiner. So how do we, so we were looking at, they're looking at not just the surrounding counties, but they're also looking at what's the private market pain, because they, they will not win on, beat us on our, our benefits. So how can we raise those salaries to bring people back into the private sector, public sector, and make it more competitive for them? And so that's what we're trying to do, specifically with building and permitting, and we have been adjusting as we do, you know, one of the, one of the best practices is when you have a difficult-to-fill or a difficult-to-retain position, is you conduct a small-scale salary survey. So while we have not fully implemented the new pay plan, as we're hiring new people, specifically in the positions that you're talking about, where IT, engineer, and building permitting, those are some of the ones that usually come to, to mind, we have done that, and we have adjusted their salaries, you know, trying to do that, but we're also trying to, got to make sure that we're being equitable to those that are in current positions. So we're being cautious but careful, careful and, and judicious, rather, as we do that.
Are we looking at it even with the fact of the contractors that know the medians and all that sort of stuff? I mean, I know we, we farm a lot of that out due to the expense of equipment and things like that, but, I mean, are we even looking as, as, as something as, as in that area? I mean, of all areas?
We, we will go through all areas we're currently contracting out. There's some areas where, I mean, for instance, you see in the budget, you know, in parks, at, you know, at the, after we've made decisions, you know, we are adding a foreman and some maintenance folks that are going to be taking care of our, you know, our parks along the beaches, verse, and then taking that back in-house versus relying on that contract.
Okay, Commissioner Laura, then Commissioner Moss.
Madam Chair, thank you. The question is the compensation study, you come up with a specific number that we've set aside of eight point six, eight-six, one-five-one. So you have a specific number, we don't have the compensation study back, so are we going to use that hard number, fill in what the compensation study tells us from an external person? Or how did we come up with a specific number? Are we going to plug this in where we can fit? We're going to use crayons and color around it? How are we going to make this fit?
So that, that number was derived based on a proposal that we discussed with them on capping it at a certain percentage, and then as we sat and met and went through, looking at various positions, look at various departments, in this case, that capped it at ten percent, meaning like, everybody would come in, you know, you could get up to ten percent increase, and then we said, wait a minute, we're kind of like, we, I'll use the directors, fourteen thousand, seventeen thousand versus forty-five hundred. So, so I said, we need to flip this upside down and make sure that we're giving these different, you know, these percentages higher. But the other thing that we did do, I mean, it does look at, you know, it looks at their lengthened position, and also their placement in the, the pay grade, the new pay grades. And then lastly, I would say, is we, that's why we are, you know, proposing a contingency for the purposes of being able to, twenty percent, to make sure that we can implement, you know, and consistent with the board's direction and vision, and making sure that, again, our lowest wage earners who work maybe outside, you know, maintaining a ballfield, maintaining, you know, their swales and our ditches, working at a plant, whatever the case may be, that we're, we're focusing on that, staff assistance, we're focusing and making sure that they're going to receive, you know, a, a, an appropriate pay raise that makes them competitive, but also ensures that they are, you know, they're well outstripping inflation.
Okay, and we're going to have this done by ten-one?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Mr. Moss.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I understand that we are playing catch-up with emergency services, and I guess we just need to catch up as, as fast as we can. But I was looking at a, a different line item, and that is veteran services, and I saw the, the decrease there, and my question is, I thought that we were planning on a new focus on veteran services, the VSOs, and even to the extent of extending the hours of operation and being able to walk in at point at different days without an appointment, you know, that kind of effort was being made, so would, would you address that, please?
Sure, and I'm just going to pull a document, because last year, we added, you know, we had, we added a full-time and a part-time vet service officer last year, and this year, we are adding a position in veteran services. One, we have a turnover, but, but we are adding a, a staff assistant, you know, to their, to help assist in that, that area. So we are adding a part-time staff assistant there, but that's.
So are the, are the services then still increasing, even though the budget doesn't?
Well, we, we added some last year, you know, but we, yes, we, we certainly have the, the office at Sebastian staffed, and then we have down here staffed, and Cindy and Melissa have done a good job at, you know, kind of being creative in terms of create opportunities, they've reduced the waiting times, you know, they were sometimes a couple of months, now, you know, less than thirty days. They also have like, walk. They also have like walking, I think it's walking Fridays where they, somebody, a vet can just walk in. And then recently, we've, you know, partnered with Cindy and Vet Services partner with, you know, our property praiser for the, to, to do the, you know, to push the benefits, you know, veterans, and then they can connect them.
Okay.
Oh, and, oh, the decrease, that's right, yes. The reason why there is a decrease is because of, last year, if you recall, well, this year, we budgeted, you know, for the World War II tribute. So that's why there's a decrease, because that amount was a one-time capital expenditure, but it affects that budget line item.
I see, thank you for that.
Yes.
We also, we also have financed encumbered vacancies available as well, right?
Well, if you have, if we have a position that's authorized, the funds are budgeted for that position, yes.
I think we do.
I think the deficit that Commissioner Moss is referring to was part of that World War II celebration, so.
There was the thirty-seven helical piers that needed to be, and if you haven't been out there, it's, it's moving along really well, and you can, so.
Okay, awesome, all right. If there's no other questions on that, back to wherever we are in this.
So what I'm going to do is going to try to highlight the larger ones rather than hit some of the smaller ones.
What was the issue we've had?
So you see a reduction in the county attorney's line item. That's largely due to a rollover balance from the prior year for the digitization of records. For communication services, it's one, two, three, four down, it's about six hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollar increase. That, that will, you know, it deals with some switches related to security cameras, generator replacement at West and Hobart Towers, as well as upgrading our microwave ring system. That, that in itself is five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The next one would be administrator operations, you know, they all don't reside, they're in our office, but like the ombudsman, economic development, you know, they're, they're kind of outside. But administrator operations, two hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. That would be for communications specialists that will work with our legislative affairs and communications manager, and then the economic development specialists that we discussed, as well as some promotional materials related to just the county. And then also we have a, there'll be another area where we'll talk about, or they'll come back as the centennial celebration. Community services, you know, there were some of these, you know, you don't see positions, I should probably add, is we made some adjustments this year related to community services, moving people from their existing positions and reclassifications and increases, moving them from planning development services into community services, to hire a ship administrator and also have a housing, you know, specialist. So we've kind of done some of that this year, you know, to, which was consistent with the reorganization that was planned. But we do have to provide a split for some, two of our ship employees. Our ship administrative revenues don't, you know, provide enough for the purposes of funding, so we are picking up a little bit of that. Human resources, it's a seventy-two thousand dollar increase, but I'll, what I will add is what you're getting is you're getting two things. One, an additional HR payroll specialist, I mean, they have two. And that, they process all the payroll, you know, for, that's submitted, they review, they process it. But we also are hiring, looking to hire a training and development manager for the county. So we can, you know, bring some of this training inside, also start working on tracking training, kind of, just kind of, and we think it's an important need as we invest our employees and it was, we invest in the employees and provide them the training and the tools necessary to do their job, it's an investment in the organization. Emergency management, largely a decrease because last year, we had the, the public emergency medical transportation grant, so that's, you know, less a hundred and six thousand dollars. And then we are reclassing, you know, the emergency coordinator position has been reclassed to be the assistant director of emergency services director and the chief of emergency management. Then also, we're providing funding to, you know, to do disaster expo, disaster guides. Parks, I mentioned earlier, they were hiring two maintenance workers and a senior maintenance worker and a foreman, and that will remove the beach contract for the, for the, at least for one of the workers and the foreman. There's also the Wobasso restroom renovations, thirty, thirty-two thousand dollars, a wide area mower, obviously, they, they mow a lot of fields, that's seventy thousand dollars. Ball field groomer, thirty-eight thousand, and then replacing one of their existing mowers at twenty-six thousand. So the next item that I'll focus on is facilities management. It's a five hundred and nine thousand dollar increase, largely due to janitorial services, other contractual services, increase electric, garbage, maintenance, two hundred and forty-one thousand dollars additional funds being budgeted for maintenance, fuel, replacing a truck to afford three thousand dollars, and a key cutter, and then there's also a generator for fifty-six thousand dollars for the health department, because that one's kind of having some issues. For the office of management budget, you see a decrease there. That's largely because the economic development study is, was located in their budget, and that's happening, you know, that'll happen this year, and so that, that won't roll over or that, it'll probably roll over, but it, the point is, it's not being budgeted now because it's there. Building facility services, that's the new department we talked about creating, so that's why there's some expenses there for a director, a capital projects division manager, a capital project manager, you know, for staff assistant, and then all those positions that will transfer in will come into there. Let's see, other ones that, so I think that's it, unless you have any other specific questions. Tried to highlight the, the ones that are, have larger increases. I mean, I can go over any of them if you would like, but.
Commissioners, are there any questions on the general fund expenses?
I do.
Yep, go ahead.
First of all, the, the building and facility services, too, I think that's a fabulous idea with the amount of probably, you know, billions of dollars we have in regards to all facilities and the land we own and stuff like that in the facilities we have, I think that's definitely, definitely needed. It was, you know, tough on public works to manage that, along with building roads and bridges and everything else that they're tasked to do out there. So, so I fully support that. For clarification, the Indian River Lagoon portion, just, just let people know what, what that is.
So the Indian River Lagoon, there's a, there's a decrease, one, we did the, there is a plans, last year, we bought a boat and trailer, that was about sixty thousand dollars. This year, we're doing the Oyster Restoration Project. So that's why it's, it's only going down sixty-four thousand dollars because it's an offset. And there are some other capital projects that we're looking at that would affect the Indian River Lagoon in terms of, you know, infrastructure, like, we'll be going to come back to with, related to ARPA funds and a plan to where we could potentially buy some equipment that would help us, you know, the community and impact the Indian River Lagoon.
All right. Do you have anything?
And one other question. The unencumbered, unapproved, disallowed funding from children's services that was previously allotted, went back to the general fund to offset some of this?
So it really never leaves the general fund, but yes, it, the hundred and twenty-eight thousand, I think four hundred and ten dollars, I think it stays in the general fund, yes.
Okay.
Just want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
So at this point in time, it's, you know, it's for constitutional officers.
Okay, you want to take a?
Yeah, I guess.
Okay.
All right, we'll take a, just a quick five-minute break to refresh our coffees before we get into the constitutional, so you guys can get ready for the fun and games. We'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we'll have our constitutional I think we are starting with the clerk of the circuit court.
Thank you for your time. I do want to thank our staff for putting together what I think was a very modest increase in our budget of three point eight-five percent. Our staff at the clerk and comptroller's office really went over the line items in detail and were able to reduce number of funding expenditures from the previous year. And that's why we were able to come in with a three point eight-five percent increase while still offering our employees a cost of living increase of five percent. And I do want to thank them for being able to work the numbers that way. Now, there is one caveat to our budget, and it's the same one that you've heard for the past six years when Clerk Smith was here. In two thousand and five, the funding model for the clerk court operations information technology budget changed, and the state put that burden on the counties to fund our information technology services at the courthouse. We have never asked the county for money to fund those services because we've relied on trust funds. And for the past, well, since two thousand and five, so going on nineteen years now, we've been using those trust funds. Those funds are running out. And so in the future, we do expect that we're going to need to come back before the board and ask the board to fund those information technology resources. We are not at that point yet, but every year for the past six years, we have warned the board that that's coming. So I just want to make that. In 2005, the funding model for the clerk court operations information technology budget changed. And the state put that burden on the counties to fund our information technology services at the courthouse. We have never asked the county for money to fund those services because we've relied on trust funds. And for the past, well, since 2005, so going on 19 years now, we've been using those trust funds. Those funds are running out. And so in the future, we do expect that we're going to need to come back before the board and ask the board to fund those information technology resources. We are not at that point yet, but every year for the past six years, we have warned the board that that's coming. So I just want to make that clear again that that's going to happen in the future, but fortunately, we're still not there yet.
Ryan, do you have kind of an anticipated timeframe in which that would hap? I know you've been warning us for six years, but like, are we talking two more years or six more years, or are you unsure?
And we're going to try to do that gradually. We're not going to just come before the board and say, all the money's gone. Now we need a million dollars to fund the information technology resources. We do anticipate next year's, the 2026-27 budget year, to shift some of those requests over to the county. And then by 2027, 2028, we would expect more of that to be shifted to the county. And one thing that did occur this past legislative session, which helps, is that the amount of money going into that trust fund increased based on an allocation of some of the court fees. And so we expect to see more revenue coming into those funds. And that's going to decrease the burden on the county, obviously, because we will see more revenue going into the funds, which we can use. But it's sort of a, as you know, it's an estimation game, trying to figure out how much we're going to get from that increased revenue versus how much we're going to need, especially with the new mandates we get every year from Tallahassee regarding our information technology.
I know we've talked about it, but having kind of like the ability to anticipate and start generally, or gradually increasing that and offsetting it, I think for us budgetarily in the future, it's good to know that.
Yes.
Any questions of the clerk? No? You have a question? No? Oh, all right. Thank you. We appreciate it very much. You always do a great job. All right. Next is the tax collector, but I know that that is more of a, and it's kind of a placeholder because that budget will come later on in August. So we will move on to the property appraiser. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Put the budget here before you today. The, of course, it increases, it's a cola also, but one thing that I've heard you struggle with, and it's something that we, I've had to struggle with, is of course employees and staffing. And we've already had our salary study implemented at mid-year last year. Therefore, that's kind of indicative of what you're seeing here in front of you today, is we've already swallowed that hard pill. And so I appreciate everything you're going through, and that's some of what you're seeing up there. Where are we now? This budget reflects a lot of investment in technology in addition to my staff and my team. The technology that we're using right now is, it's really improved the operations of the office specifically. Right now, when a deed gets recorded at the clerk's office, people like to see it get updated to the soft, the website of the property appraiser's office. And they like to see it be done as soon as possible. It's really immaterial as far as title and all that kind of stuff. But people like to see it, and I like to get it there quickly. When I first took office, it was taken up to 45 days to be able to get that from the deed, to get the data transferred over to the property appraiser's website so that it could be viewed and used by the general public. Got an update yesterday in talking to the software team that we use for that service. And right now, we're down to up to three days. So we've made some substantial progress in that. So much so, we're looking at another product that's still, that's in this budget. It's going to have to do specifically homestead applications online. If we have the opportunity to do that online, it'll give us the opportunity to not have a staff person to be able to have to pay Florida retirement, health insurance, and all the associated costs therewith. What I'm looking for is, I told them, I said, I don't want to touch anything twice. So don't give me an application to print out, to file, to then to scan and put back into the system. I got a philosophy to only touch it once. This, and more importantly, I want to speed the process up on that where we only need two things. I need a social security number and a driver's license. I think that the days of needing a social security number, a driver's license, a voter's registration card, a copy of a lease, a utility bill, go right on down the list, is getting to the point where it's overkill. And we have technology that we can take advantage of to find that information. And if we can't find that information based on those two items of a social security number and a driver's license, then we reach out to them, go further and do better, trying to ensure that they are eligible for that homestead. That's in this budget also. And so with that, I'll open it to any questions that you may have. I'm proud to say that last year's budget, we have, we returned $600,000 of that last year's figure. And just an aside, as far as some of the things that we are dealing with in the office, since I've been property appraiser, I've lost over 300 years of institutional knowledge of staff retiring. It's been tough, especially whenever you're leaning on technology and make it to where you can do things faster, better, and cheaper. But we were able to get the job done. But 300 years of institutional knowledge in five years? I'm proud of my team. I'm proud of my team that we're able to do it and keep going and deliver the product that you need, which is a tax roll that is accurate, on time, and under budget.
Well, I have to say that the information you have available on your website and through your office is fantastic. Very encompassing. The only question I have is related to kind of doing homestead applications online. Is that something that other counties or other property appraisers are doing? I would imagine so.
They are to a certain extent. And what we have, we, I instituted it literally just about two months before they shut the world down with COVID. And I don't know what we'd have done had I not had that done literally that fast. And it was a, it was a rudimentary system, but it got the job done. And then we've had been trying to evolve into something that, and it's better now than it was back then. Before that, it wasn't available. And now I'm confident with this next round of using, it's called Just Appraise Software. We've had a lot of luck with the permitting. I've used that for your, the permitting process where now it used to have to come over from the building department in an Excel spreadsheet. And we'd have to take that data, enter it into the computer through the Excel data, and then check for any code, any errors of entering numbers in and all that. It got the job done. It took two people full-time to do it. Now we get it sent over, and instantly I get 95% of it with no errors. And then all of my staff has to do is look through the remaining 5%. And what, then something, instead of it saying RES for residential building permit, somebody typed a REM. And we just got to correct that. It has made it phenomenally so much easier. And again, we don't have to touch it twice. It goes from you into our system, shows us what needs to be fixed, then back into our system. We don't have to touch it to, and that's exactly what's going to happen if everything works out the way I'd like for it to with the homestead applications online. So to answer your question, I don't believe Okeechobee County does. But that, listen, and for those that aren't, those that are not comfortable doing it online, we're always open, and we still have those frontline people. So we want to, you know, encourage it. If you can do it online, so be it. If you feel comfortable. If you don't, come in and see.
Awesome. Well, I have to say you have done a phenomenal job with using technology to make your office more responsive and comprehensive. So kudos to you. I look forward to seeing that move forward too. Commissioners, other questions?
Just, just a few years back, when Wesley S. Davis left us to go over to the property appraiser, he was committed to ensure that we parked the horse and wagon and got into technology. And I want you to know, I appreciate your commitment. The numbers were reflective, of course. And you are moving in a great direction. So I just wanted to acknowledge it because when you were out there touting about the job, you said you were going to do it, and you did it. And got a call just two nights ago that someone had, a veteran had gone into your office.
Oh, wonderful.
And I guess it was subject to the discussion we had. He was there less than six minutes. And you know that a military guy is going to watch that watch too. And he said, I was there six minutes and my business got done.
Gives me goosebumps, Mr. Commissioner. Thank you. I appreciate that. And just to let you know, the, you know, I was sitting there, we were talking about OPEB. I was the commissioner whenever that, that was a tough decision to make. I'm talking, people were crying in the audience. It was tough. You were there. In addition to that, in 2010, during the throes of the Great Recession, as a commissioner, we asked the constitutionals to cut their budgets by 30%. And the county administrator just elaborated on that, and that's something I hope you never have to go through. I hope I never have to go through it because that's tough. You campaign always on cutting taxes. Wait till you have to do it. Then that's whenever this place gets packed. It's tough. And I bring that up because in addition to trying to do things faster, better, and cheaper, on time and under budget, I have the same staffing level from 2010. Challenge any, any constitutional to be able to lay that record out. And we don't go by population necessarily in the appraiser world. We go by parcels. So you take a subdivision, break it, one parcel ID up into 65 or 70 or whatever it is. That, we go by a parcel count. And I can't tell you how many parcels have been added since then. And to be able to get that accomplished with the same number of staff is something, again, I got to give a lot of credit to my team. Thank you.
First of all, I don't know how a boy born in Wabashso has embodied gigabytes and hard drives and software.
I don't, but I got somebody that does.
Said he was going to do it, and he did it.
My question for you is though, is I noticed the value adjustment board, we've had a lot less this year. What do you, what do you attribute that to? I mean, just good work by your staff?
Well, we get calls. I mean, and the frustrating thing about it is, and it's going to happen again, is yes, they're going to be mad about their trim notice. And, and what it, most of it is, it's not that their assessed values or their taxes have gone up as much as it is their escrow with their insurance. And, and, and once we step them, that through, it doesn't make them feel any better. But at the end of the day, what I tell my team and what I tell the taxpayers is, listen, at the end of the day, I want one of two things to be, to happen. One, I want to find something that we materially did wrong, like the fat finger syndrome where we added a zero where it shouldn't. It's, it happens. A lot of data that gets entered in. Hence, that's why I try to make it to where we're not touching things twice. If we touch it once, that cuts in half the number of times we can have fat fingern syndrome. The others is, is that at the end of the day, that taxpayer sees they might not be happy, but they're being treated fair. Their values are not any different than their neighbors. That's where I want to wind up at the end of the day. Normally, when we have that conversation and go through the either A or B scenario, that normally makes it to where we don't have the value adjustment issues.
Thanks. Y'all doing a great job. I appreciate it.
Very humbled by that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there anybody else? No? Awesome. Thanks, Wesley. All right. With that, we'll move on to the sheriff's budget. Welcome.
Hello, good morning. How are you guys? Good. Thank you. And this morning's discussion about the upside-down triangle, you know, we had the audience packed last year. And it was my goal to sort of get ahead of where you guys are at this year, the things that you're talking about. And so I thank you for last year's increase because we were able to take care of the deputies, the people who, the heroes on the front lines, the people who were doing that. And in this year's initial budget request, and I'll tell you, when we start the budget process at Indian River County Sheriff's Office, it starts in January, and I reach out to the unions and I ask for what are the wants, what are the needs, what are we trying to do? And by the time I present it to you guys, it is down to just what we need. It is down to our needs. And so this is the first year since I've been standing here before you that I made an agreement with the county administrator, and Kristen, I think she walked away for a second, but she can tell you, or she is coming in, that I didn't have Kristen and Amy there to 100% agree that, okay, we figured out how we're going to do this. Literally, we came upon, hey, I understand where we're at. I understand what we need to do. And we're still in the process of figuring out how we're going to make this number work. We had to go back to the captains and say, pull 20% out from each one of your budgets to figure out how to do this. So we are making sure that the dollars that you're sending over are going in the pockets of the employees. The employees at the, at the lower level absolutely got that increase last year to be able to hire and retain, and we're doing that. I mean, yesterday, we hired a deputy from Brevard County who's coming down to get more pay to be at a place where he wants to work, where he wants to be and wants to be a part of our community. And so I'm confident that had we had the ability to approve our entire budget this year, we would have been in a place where I will not have to come and ask for additional big increases in the future. We are definitely getting there. You guys talked about having that middle management wait and pace that out. And I told them last year, we would have to wait and pace it out, and that's where we're at this year. We're saying it again. We're going to have to wait and pace it out. So I appreciate the fact that we came to an agreement, that we got to it. But I can tell you, the number that we have doesn't give us everything that we need to accomplish all the goals, to accomplish all the things that we need to do at the Indian River County Sheriff's Office. So we're going to make it work. We'll get through it this year. But it's certainly not the number that I need to accomplish what I need to do to make sure that our community is protected. We have done a great job with the dollars that you have sent over. We've leveraged technology. We've done, you know, we've reduced crime. We've done all those things. But if we want to continue our way of life, people are moving here in crazy numbers. Our streets are crazy. We have different things happening out there. We're going to have to continue to increase funding for law enforcement and corrections.
Commissioners?
Madam Chair, good morning, Sheriff. Obviously, we approved your budget, and you can spend those dollars and allocate those dollars however you want. And based on the property appraisers' ad verum taxes, obviously, that's how we base a lot of our decisions and budget-making ideas. Going forward in the future, what is your plan in case these ad verum taxes swing down to, let's say, 8% next year?
So I watched you do it. You inherited it in a, in a bad place, and you had to find a way to do it where you have to crunch. And we're in that position right now. We're crunching. We're crunching our operations budget because we're going to make sure that our employees get paid. We're going to make sure that the dollars go in the pockets of the employees. And I know, I watched you do it where you ensured that we never cut bodies. We never let anybody go during that downturn, and I will not let that happen. We will cut operations in one way or another, however that, however that means, whether it's, you know, less purchases of items or figuring out ways to save money on, you know, finding new vendors. We'll do whatever it takes. But our team has a plan. I hope we don't get to that point. But I, I know that I've seen it done before. I know it can be done. But I'm confident that we're, you know, we're never going to have to cut bodies. We're not going to make that. We're not going to allow that to happen.
Right, great. That's what I wanted to hear. The men and women are the most important. Cars and other things can wait.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Sir.
Commissioners, other questions or comments?
I think we've already asked all the questions.
All right. The only thing I'll say is I, I do know that you said we're going to have to continue to increase the budget in law enforcement. And law enforcement and the security of our community is very important. But as you think about that moving forward, please keep in mind that we also have things that we're going to have to do that are mandated by the state, whether it's subject to sewer conversions, different funding and regulatory responsibilities that are going to be very expensive for us moving forward as well. So we all kind of have that same thing that we're going to have to juggle. So just, I know we've said this before, and it's included in the message. We just all have to work together with the taxpayers' dollars to try to be as, as clean as possible so we can all accomplish our goals. But I do agree that the men and women are the most important, and we're very lucky to have a safe community. But we're all going to have things that we're going to have to fund out of that, that small pot, so.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to thank the county administrator and team for working with us on that. So thank you, guys. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That goes both ways. We appreciate it, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. Supervisor of elections, Mrs. Swan, you have a lot going on in this next fiscal year.
Yes, we do. Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I first want to express my appreciation. You all are always so supportive of the elections office and of this upcoming budget request. As you know, part of this budget is going to be the conducting of the 2024 presidential election. And voter turnout for presidential elections is always extremely high. Here in Indian River County, it's about 76% to 80% turnout. And enthusiastic participation in the elections process is a sign of a healthy democracy where citizens are actively engaged in the political process. Conducting presidential elections is always challenging due to a very high turnout. And the ballot is always lengthy during these elections. We have six constitutional amendments, one county referendum, one school board referendum, federal, state, multi-county, countywide, special district races, and also our municipal elections. So I had to budget for a two-card ballot where the printing costs increases as well as the postage costs. And they continually seem to be going up. Also included in my budget is the cost to upgrade our elections management operational system for our tabulation system. Our current version is being phased out, and this is the first major software and hardware overhaul since the purchase of our voting system in 2017. With the rapid growth of our county, our budget includes the purchase of 10 additional precinct tabulators to equip new election day polling places. So my proposed budget for this year is $2,265,589, a 3.8% increase. So again, I thank you for your support, and I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you, Leslie. All I have to say is you do a fantastic job in representing Indian River County and running our elections are always very smooth. I've had the pleasure or displeasure, I don't know. It depends. I've had the pleasure, or displeasure, I don't know, it depends on the election, of being on the canvassing board. And even the one I was on was when there was the governor's recount, and it went very smooth compared to other counties. Your office is fantastic, and we love being able to support you in the things that you need because you do such a great job. I never have any worries about the elections that are run in Indian River County.
Well, thank you so much, and I have to thank my staff. They are absolutely amazing, and they're the most dedicated individuals, so I'm very lucky.
We are very lucky to have you and them.
Commissioners, any questions, comments, or concerns from Ms. Swan?
Madam Chair, I'll just add that as an alternate on the canvassing board and being able to go through the orientation, amazing. I mean, any skeptics out there should observe what they do, it's like a machine, and I was very proud to see that.
And I, just to piggyback on that, I have to say, too, if there are skeptics, I mean, Leslie is very open, and that whole process is very, very transparent. I am obviously not familiar with other counties and their processes, but ours is very open and transparent, and you're absolutely correct. If people would come and see how it's actually done, I think it would make a lot of people more comfortable, but.
We welcome anyone and everyone.
Being on the current canvassing board, we can anticipate to have some observers as we have customarily had in the past. I think this year, perhaps it might be enhanced. There's been a lot of inquiries nationally, and I think that even others from another jurisdiction, if they saw what we have here, I think you can change more than just the county. It just, it runs nice and smooth.
Thank you very much.
Good luck this year.
I appreciate that.
We'll be thinking about you for sure.
I'll take all the prayers I can.
Thank you.
I did invite a few people over.
Did you? All right, the next item is the value adjustment board. Do you guys handle that? I mean, there's really, it is what it is. Okay.
Mr. Fleischer?
We didn't keep it the same this year. She raised it 2.9% for miscellaneous increase in general cost.
Well, we do have, that's legal expenses and printer cartridges.
Absolutely.
And paper, there are sundries that have to be utilized to ensure that the public is fully, fully aware of what we're doing. So, there is a cost of doing business, but we try to keep it down nice and lean.
A total of $1,800, that's all, Madam Chairman, I've got to say, we're about as efficient as we can get.
We're keeping it as tight as you can, well, I'm glad that if the number, if the money needs to go to legal services in that particular board, that is important because...
Well, every decision has to be reviewed, as you know, and fortunately, we have a great team. And, gosh, I think I signed off on something that was about $27, you know, and I just, I get the alerts when it's $27. But I have to say that Terry keeps it nice and lean.
Nice and lean.
So, she actually exemplifies the word value in value adjustment.
Terry and her crew do a great job, and I tell you, the cooperation that we get from the property appraisers' office, the clerk's office, is just fabulous. I mean, again, we had a few this year, but not as many as we've had in the past related to what I asked a property appraiser earlier, but it works, it works very well, and we kid about it, but it is very efficient and very well.
Yes.
All right, just to kind of wrap up the constitutional officers section, I just want to reiterate that we are very happy and proud to have the relationships we do with our constitutional officers and the collaborations that we do. Not a lot of counties can say that. So, we are grateful for that and that they work as well with the county as they do, so.
Madam Chair, I agree with that, and I want to thank John and Kristen and her staff because I know dealing with some of the constitutionals, it could be a little different. I've been on the other side, and it's been, as Kristen knows, kind of a debate at times, so very proud that you guys resolved that. Thank you, John.
Thank you. All right, with that, it looks like we're on to Municipal Service Taxing Unit, otherwise known as the MSTU.
Again, Madam Chair, members of the board, the edvorm taxing role, tax role for the MSTU, the unincorporated area, increased by 10%, which is generating about $1.6 million in additional revenue, again, assuming the 95% collection. The military is being proposed not to be changed, that's a double negative, but we're proposing to not change the military at 1.1506 from last year. There are some transfers, 9.4 million go out to fund transportation, and 32.59 million go out to fund law enforcement. Related to the MSTU, there, for part of the compensation study implementation, there's $628,000 and change there for those areas. And then, just to remind everybody, there was a recreational facilities fee increase, and that will generate additional revenue of about $320,000, $421,000. One of those is the golf course. No, no, that's in the press, I'm sorry. Okay, so we'll get to that one later. So, with that...
Just before you move on to the next slide, I did have a question from a member of the public the other day about what the MSTU is kind of for and what it's to fund, and just a brief kind of educational piece for those that might be listening.
So, for those, I guess the best way to picture it is, for those who live in a city, they provide a different level of services for certain items. And for those that live in, this is basically, we are, the MSTU provides those services in the county, it funds those services similar to what cities provide.
So, municipal services that are provided to those residents in the unincorporated county?
Correct.
The majority of that is going to be law enforcement, parks, that kind of thing.
Transportation.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, here you have the military, again, remaining the same, but it is important to note that it's 7.24% above the rollback rate from last year. So, now we'll go line by line, but again, I'm going to try to stick to the ones that are most, just the larger ones that kind of stick out, like the North County Aquatic Center. You have some additional funds, you know, that are increased for salaries, but you also have some replacement funds, like for the pool vacuum, some laptops, increasing chemicals, replacing the SUV, that's, it's served its time, and then also the pool cover. The next I'll go down to is the intergenerational IG Center, adding a part-time assistant, staff assistant, some additional overtime. Then we also have the Level Two Background Checks, it's a mandate that we now have to conduct Level Two Background Checks, it's about $4,000. We're looking at additional labor, or, excuse me, electric costs, painting in the library, $1,000, $1,000 lighting project to, you know, replace and repair those lights, some, you know, tables and chair replacement, $12,000, we have a warmer because we have events there, so it's important to have that, $3,000. And so, then there's also a server for cameras, it's about $17,000. And then last, a commercial kitchen, or at least a fridge for the kitchen, is the $12,000, that kind of covers that $144,000.
I have a question while we're on the IG Center.
Yes.
Is there anything in here, or maybe it's in a different funding section related to, like, camera systems at the IG Center, so when we have events, we can record or they can be streamed? I know that was something we kind of talked about last year.
We did, and then, so, we kind of shuttled that project because as we reached out to all the boards, nobody was interested in holding meetings at the IG Center. So, what we did is repurpose those funds to invest in a better system in the Building B room because it had, you have the one microphone moving around, you can't really capture it, upgrading the audiovisual there, and then adding an audiovisual component to the conference room upstairs where sometimes the CSEC Subcommittee meeting, they have their meetings, the Subcommittee meet. So, that's where we did that because we just, we didn't get any interest from any of the boards that they wanted, were willing to go offsite for their meetings. And we do have, you know, we could do, still do virtual meetings, matter of fact, some of our ear meetings were done virtually there, just not like having these microphones the way we do and record here. We do have the now one enhancing the, what's happening in Building B, the conference room, and then adding that to the conference room upstairs.
Okay. Yeah, speaking of the ear meetings, I know as we start and go through some of these planning projects over the next couple of years and have those workshops, we generally use the IG Center. So, at least having the ability to record and then rebroadcast at a later date, I think moving forward would be nice, not, maybe not so much for boards that want to meet there, but for different community events that we want to make sure the public is kind of being able to engage as an outreach. And I know parks sometimes does webinars and different educational things at the IG Center that would be nice to be able to have.
And we do have the ability with that system too, like Microsoft Teams, you can record it right out the gate.
Okay.
And it's same as like with Zoom, or if somebody else uses one of the other platforms, we can record those. Matter of fact, for the ear, they were recorded, and they would update the recording on the website so everybody could see the most recent ear recording of that public workshop.
Okay, fantastic.
Madam Chairman, I would agree with that. I think we need to strive to look for that in the future. I know last year when we had the State of the County Luncheon, you know, people were like, I didn't get to see it. They, I mean, they kind of assumed that anything government does, we should, you know, stream or have it recorded live. I think we need to move in that direction over the, over the next year, whatever we can do. But I like the fact that we did enhance Building B or go on to, that's not done yet, right?
No, it's not done yet.
Okay, but we are going to do that, so that's a good idea. But I would agree with what Madam Chairman brought up about the IG Center. I think it would be a big, huge plus.
Commissioner?
And also, there might be a possibility that other organizations would use it if we did have that equipment. You may recall, we referred the Taxpayer Association meeting to the IG Center, and I think, you know, other organizations might be interested if we do have that kind of equipment.
And largely, the equipment that we're discussing is like the audiovisual that we have here, and the microphones, the system that does the agendas and the management. So, that's what we're looking at doing, but we, again, since there is audio, there is the capability to record and document any event there. So, it just, you know, with the State of the County, it is a chamber event, I know they, it's one of the largest fundraisers, I understand, so it's, we just happened to get invited to present the State of the County, but it's a good point. It's a comment that came last year, I heard from a resident, a concerned resident, that they were not able to attend, and they wanted to know what was stated.
Awesome, thank you. Oh, I'm glad we have the ability to do that there, and I understand we're talking about two different systems, so that was, that was my bad.
So, beach and parks, you're looking at a slight decrease, $181,000, largely it's because of Hurricane Ian and Nicole, the repairs were completed, $213,000. So, it's dropping off. The shooting range, we, there's an increase, you know, one for, as it relates to the benefits over time, as you'll see for most of them, but the clay targets, some, you know, and then also replacing a truck that is outdated. And then last year, we also bought, we worked on the lighting in addition to the clay scores.
I would comment on the sporting clay range and all that sort of stuff, or we...
I can get it more specific. My understanding is moving along. I know we got the permit and they're doing everything, but for a more detailed, you know, project management status, I can get that to, provide to all the board members, but they, I know they have the permit, they've been doing the work, and so...
Yeah, some of those different, oh, what are they called, the, where you shoot from, buildings are going up.
Oh, the trap or the skate.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, and the, and the sporting clays and the second, the second course. So, because I'm always getting questions about, what are those tiny homes in the woods off of I-95? I'm like, they're not tiny homes. That's a sporting clays facility, and you probably don't want to live there, but it's looking good and it's getting noticed, and I'm, I know this is something, that second range is something we've worked on for a long time, as I see Holden hiding out in the audience back there, so glad to see it moving forward.
I'll just add, the new courses, very difficult. There may be another reason.
I still think we need to do a team building at the sporting clays course, and it might take out some frustrations, build camaraderie. But, anyway, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, we're good. So, I just want to note, planning, there is a $66,000 increase largely due to mid-year reclass of one of our, one of our positions, and so that's impacting this year's upcoming budget. So, for county planning, there, you see a decrease, and it's in large measure because of the, while we are adding a long-range planning admin assistant to help out, but you're seeing there's a reduction just because of some of the turnover and the retirements, there's less money needed to be budgeted. But the ear, the evaluation report for our comprehensive plan and the Manti Protection Plan update, that was $264,000. That should be, I think we expect the draft here in September, October. There is an increase in temp labor supply, but then the big one is the scanning project that we were doing, that was, they budgeted $465,000, and that is already done. And then there was also some, a reduction in software costs, about $10,000, and then also some charges related to GIS support for $33,000. Code enforcement, very similar, the scanning project was $100,000, so out of that, minus $137,000, but you also had software, laptops, and then last year, we also bought them an additional vehicle. Natural resources, it's going up about $69,000 largely because of the increased salaries and benefits due to the reorganization. And then, we also, what's dropping off, at least for being rebudgeted this year, is the vulnerability grant to the tune of $249,000. And then there is also a SUV that's needed this year to be... So, with that, I don't think I have anything else on this one.
Are there any other questions on the MSTU fund expenses? Nope. All right.
So, the next is the transportation budget overview. There's a 6.2% increase of $75,100 for the entire, increase in retirement, $73,000 or 24.5% increase in worker comp costs. There's funds budgeted here as well for those employees, and in this fund for the compensation implementation, about $1 million. The gas revenues are largely staying flat, it's about $2.685 million, and the transfers from the general fund, the MSTU fund, account for 77.5% of the total fund of revenues, and an increase of about 13.9% or $2,445,420. You can answer any questions if you have on those.
Anybody have any questions on, on that, or the transportation fund, or you're going to go through these fund expenses?
So, some of the expenses relate to the transportation fund. Road and bridge, increase of 6.9 million, or, no, excuse me, 6.9% or $814,000. I will tell you, for this upcoming year, last year, there's $830,000 in capital, this year, there's a guardrails and sidewalk study that's proposed, there's some additional equipment maintenance for auto, you know, sod contracts going up by $45,000, paving materials going down by $20,000, but we are, you know, about $15,000 additional in pipe and culvert. Road material, about $105,000 more, as we know, those prices continue to, you know, as gas goes up, petroleum, so that affects, you know, our road material. The acquisition of a utility trailer for $7,000. Don't get too excited right now, but there is an excavator for $256,000, two loaders...
Heavy equipment is fun.
Yes, two loaders for $614,000, a dozer for $207,000. So, there's some substantial capital, infrastructure investment within road and bridge. The public...
Are there any more road graders?
He really wants to drive one.
Well, we pre-ordered one, an additional one last year.
I do, we could do team building, rating roads.
We pre-ordered additional one last year.
Kirsten might not appreciate it, but, I'm kidding, moving on, I'm sorry.
Public Works, you do see a reduction there in large measure due to the scanning services that we've been doing, digitizing, you know, the physical records, making them, you know, more electronic, but we are doing an ADA study that's budgeted for $200,000. For county engineering, we are adding a GIS technician that will help, that will put somebody in Public Works, somebody in utilities, we have somebody in planning. So, to provide, even though we have a GIS section, these are more narrow-focused and specific to the areas, so that'll help. And then there's a replacement truck into, for, at the cost of about... And then there's a replacement truck into, for, at the cost of about $42,000, then GPS for surveying, and $61,500. And then last year's capital was $74,000, so there's a little bit more this year with those costs. For traffic engineering, I know it's an issue, it's important, we are adding a traffic engineering one. I know many of you get requests for like, well, what are we doing here? What are we doing there? So that, that'll help us. There are some, you know, outside signal contractor, you know, the increase of about $27,000, about $50,000 increase of payments to FEC, a little more than that. Payment markings, an additional $12,000, traffic signs, $13,000, a bucket truck, you know, that will help. The current one is kind of, we'll say it's on its last legs, but having one that's, you know, we can get, will, will help in the event that something happens to that one. Upgrade to the traffic, we'll need a traffic control device trailer, about $28,000. And there's a traffic pulse AI system, so we're really kind of venturing into that, that's about $7,500. And then all the, the traffic signal, you know, to make sure that we're kind of, we're going to have electronic keys for these cabinets to kind of, so not to worry about somebody leaves, oh, they have the key, whatever the case might be, and that's about $52,000. So, and then the, all those, those expenses, like, man, that's a lot more than that $55,000. Last year's capital for traffic engineering was $546,000.
Real quick, what is the increase to FEC for?
So anytime FEC, and I think Kirsten's here and Kristin, but anytime FEC gives us notice that they're going to be doing maintenance on a crossing, we have the budget funds for that.
Okay.
It's still, even with the new ones, you know, it's still our responsibility.
So with new, with more maintenance because they have more activity, that's gone up? Okay.
Stormwater, we are adding an inspector. I did note in the, the budget message, you know, one of the things with our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, you know, and the, our MS4 municipal stormwater sewer permit, system permit, MS4, there's some compliance issues based on a former audit. We're trying to make sure we can address those as well as making sure that we're applying the MPDES and MS4 requirements, per the requirements, we're not going above or we're not going below. We're just trying to make sure that we're in compliance. That position's $76,000. There was a, there's about $30,000 increase in, you know, in electric. Obviously, you know, the more hand marsh and ospreys, you know, there's maintenance in electrical there, garbage and the increase there. And then there's also two trucks and a UTV that are budgeted. And then another large, a dump trailer, rather, not large thing, a dump truck. And, and I cannot articulate what the articulating system is, but I know it's going to cost $10,000. I forget.
Commissioner, do you have any questions on the transportation fund expenses?
Every time we, we review this, it just blows my mind, all the things you just said. I mean, I almost wonder if we're still not enough money in this account.
So I think, there's probably never enough money, but, but also, we, it's the ability to manage the projects that we have, get them done timely. I know Kirsten, working with Nancy, they've been looking at, you know, with some of the vacancies, trying to bring on some firms. Like, we did bring on a, a private firm to help us with some of our traffic studies and stuff like that because just the volume's there and the backlog. So using some of the savings that we're experiencing by virtue of vacancies and trying to get, you know, bringing a firm on to address those issues. I know there's issues related as far as the stormwater, maintenance of our swales, it's something we've discussed internally. And then just managing capital projects, the infrastructural side, you know, are there smaller projects that we could bring somebody on, you know, on a contract basis, you know, to take over those smaller projects, not the multi-year extended project like 66 or 58 or, you know, one of those larger projects? But it's, it's a healthy investment in our.
Projects and the equipment required to, to just do this, this part of, you know, Public Works, it's just always, always been like, wow.
So I know they're very happy. This was one of the last, you know, like a 1.2 almost million dollars in, in infrastructure, meaning like capital equipment, you know, trucks, things that they need, heavy equipment to get the job done. So we're addressing, we, we are addressing those deferred needs.
I know this, I know Public Works has over multiple accounts, you know, I'm sure. It just always, this is like, this, this one is always just like, wow.
All right, any other questions? No? All right, then we will move on to Emergency Services District.
Yes. So the Emergency Service District includes, it's countywide with the exception of the areas of jurisdiction of town of Indian River shores. Advalarm tax roll, it's a 9.47% increase that will generate about $4.75 million in additional revenue. We are recommending no change to the military and leaving it 2.3531. And then the additional part of the, is we are adding eight fire positions, eight positions to emergency services, four fire medics and three rescue sergeants that I mentioned earlier. They would, they will supplement, you know, the unit veil and Bravo unit, and then at the appropriate time when Station 16 opens, they'll be relocated there. There was increased retirement costs there to the tune of about $430,000 or 4.6% in workers' comp costs, we've seen that across the board, 33.4%. Obviously, it's a, there's high hazard, so it's usually the rates a little bit more, but that's 300, almost $379,000 increase and a capital budget of 2.71. And I do want to address a couple items, and I'll start with capital. I, I know, I've had a question like, wow, we're decreasing our fire capital by $10 million and it's really just, be mindful of the fact that we pre-purchased a number of apparatuses because of the lead time, what was used to be a year, 14, 15 months, is now more like two years, depending on what, what you're ordering. But we did pre-purchase last year, $7 million of apparatus, of equipment, vehicles. So you also have, there's a reduction, you know, because we upgraded the train site at the UFC last year, $650,000. And then Station 11 renovations, I know it's not complete and we're kind of going through some, you know, back and forth with the company. We kind of put them on notice based on the last meeting, but that was about $290,000, but the numbers actually will, will grow a little bit. So it's not really like, well, while you're cutting capital, but we just advanced purchase, very expensive, you know, and they're also, the, the lead time is pretty significant on the manufacturing standpoint. But I want, operating is about a $1.4 million increase. Insurance, auto insurance, maintenance, additional $64,000, $46,000 for software, additional $25,000 in fuel. Uniforms is related to the eight positions as well as other replacement uniforms, $25,000, PPE, $679,000 in protective, personal protective equipment. So I think that's important. And then additional $250,000 in medical supplies. You also have the, the Public Emergency Management Transportation Grant that was funded here is, so it's, it's, that's a reduction of $929,000 just for that. But we also do have more devices and we're doing $106,000. And then flooring, about $38,000 for that. So if you have any questions, I can, you know.
Where are we on construction of, I believe it's Station 7? And then separately, where do we stand with Station 16?
So, okay, so each of the stations will say 15, 16, 17, they're in different planning stages. 15, we have a contract on property that is located, you know, it's, I won't say in the heart, but it's located, you know, in.
We do have a contract.
In VLE, but will also serve the surrounding area and it places, obviously, we need to get out of the temporary station, you know, at the North County Aquatic Center and, and have a more permanent location. And then also by, with the location that we've identified and we have a contract on, we, it will put the unit or the, the station closer to the areas where, to serve our residents versus, you know, placing residents over 95 and accidents on 95. Understand it's important, but our calls for service, you know, to our residents and ensuring that we get there in a timely fashion, we think has a greater priority. Station 7, I think the bid's been received? Dave, does the bid been received for Station 7? I know they, they were out, I apologize.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The bid opened today for Station 7, so we should know something today for Station number 7, so.
Okay, and we do have funding for Station 15 and the property and Station 7? That's already been funded in the past, correct?
And the CIE also has money for 16, and we do have parcels for 17 and 18, which were given to us through an agreement for the Liberty subdivision and from the solid waste district. So we're covered as far as land.
Okay.
We're just.
Recovered as far as land and then the construction costs is in the CIE?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, fantastic. Do we have a timeframe on Station 15?
We, as soon as we can finalize the acquisition, we've already done some due diligence. You know, the directive is to accelerate that in terms of the design. We're using a very similar design that we're using elsewhere for consistency purposes, so that should help. And then we're kind of, some of the conditions of the, the property, and it actually will open up an opportunity, I should say, because it's larger than, larger than what we need, but it will open up an opportunity for potentially having a North County Public Works compound to store some material, materials as well as like, you know, road base and stuff like that, as well as.
Which would be good too, because I know we're storing it on right-of-way in the back of VLE right now and that causes some problems with the neighbors.
Bless you.
Okay, I was just curious where we stood on those two particularly and then the ones moving forward, but I'm glad to hear we have the, the land. That's a huge coup.
Very pleased to announce 15, we have a location, you know, so now.
And we have a contract?
We, we have a contract, and now the only thing that we're waiting to do is we are negotiating, I won't say negotiating, but it's like, they have a price, we have a price, and they were.
Trying to get ours closer to.
I was saying, they were meeting with another agency about other property on that land just to, I guess, to validate their price versus what we, we, our appraisal is. But giving the location and then also the constraints we've had, the difficulty acquiring other land, with, you know, not requiring, you know, a significant amount of mitigation, the benefit would outweigh the cost, I would, I would, I would submit.
We have received an offer from them. It is very difficult to find property for this station along 512 because all of the northern property adjacent to 512 is owned by the state. They will not allow us to build a fire station on their property or on that property. The owner of the site that we are looking at is also in negotiations with FDOT for condemnation on the property across from the Publix. So they're trying to compare the value of that property to the value of an interior parcel next to the lake on 510 by the high school where we're looking at. And we're hopeful that we will be able to negotiate a fair price.
Okay.
And they were meeting yesterday.
We don't want to say anymore, I don't want to jinx it, but I just wanted to make sure that we're moving it forward and we have the money to do what we need to do there because that is a priority for the North County area.
Yes.
Not to be selfish, but I will be.
And moving forward, Chief intimated that 16 and 17, we have the land secured already?
16, we do not. We have parcels we're looking at currently and are, with our real estate advisor, he's looking into them also, but 17 and 18, we do have.
17 and 18, all right. That was a stick point with 15, that's why they're in that portable for the past.
Right.
So we're moving forward, but land, not the structure?
Correct. As far as 7, once they sign the documents, they have 400 days to give us the, the building turnkey, so.
And that land was donated too, we already had that.
Right, it was from the Corrigan's. It's actually in the city of Felsmere as far as their city limits, so it's just west, just north of the CVS Distribution Center.
Perfect.
Used to be the county.
Yes.
The footprint of the station is similar to what we've been building.
Right, is it, we're all going with three bays currently because of our equipment needs and basically it's the same, just with a few upgrades per NFPA as far as decontamination areas and things of that sort. But it's basically, if you look at Station 14 on 26, it'll look just like that, just slight differences on the interior.
And will these projects be handled by the new capital facilities, building coordination? Okay, perfect. So we, we won't have a Station 11 situation again.
So the 400 days are real.
Knock on wood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Yes.
Mr. Administrator, with respect to the $10 million of outstanding capital that's in the pipeline, I suggest, what percentage of that was used out of optional?
That, well, I'm sorry?
Out of the 10 million, the rolling stock that we're waiting on?
Yes.
I guess it's all rolling. Is that, the majority of that through optional from last year?
Oh, no, it's the EST fund. No, it is the EST fund, Emergency Services District fund.
Is there any way to offset any extended capital purchases through optional to enhance the salaries of our fire?
As, as they're presented and if, if we don't have the funding, we, we can do that, yes.
In other words, we can shift.
And we have.
Okay, in the meantime, you're negotiating currently?
Yes, with, yes.
And we hope to have that resolved soon.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding Emergency Services District expenses, funds, programs, projects? Nope. All right, then we will move on to state agencies.
Okay.
Are you going to go through this or do we have?
I'm going to highlight just a couple, you know, because I know there's some that have, so, New, New Horizons, I mean, I know we see the 15% increase, it's about $52,833. And, you know, reviewing their application and, and that they submitted, they've essentially been, you know, operating in a deficit and they're at a point where those, those reserves are depleted, so they're asking for additional funds for, for this upcoming year. It's about a, again, $52,000 increase compared to last year's, or, yeah, $52,833 increase or 15%. The next I would just point out, it's a state mandate, but it, it's something that, it will continue to watch it, but it's a state mandate, funding for energy care. We do get a, we, we fund about 75%, I think we get about 25%, you know, provided back to us from the hospital district, but it's $227,000 or a 17.24% increase and mandated, you know, funding for Medicaid. And then lastly, I know, similar to what the clerk of court mentioned about technology court, technology costs, the state attorney's office is facing that as well. And this year, a part of their budget, it's $126,000 increase, $95,000 of it is related to technology. So with that, I mean, unless you have any other questions, and then we'll just.
I do know that Diamond Liddy was here earlier, but she.
And some aren't here.
She had a conflict and couldn't stay, but she expressed her appreciation for the continued funding. If there are other representatives of any of the agencies on this list, you're.
Examiners here.
You're welcome to come on up.
Dr. Ronika?
Because I want to ask her how the, how the building plans are coming, and remember we all started about three years ago on the, you know, getting them a new facility located on the public safety grounds of the college, so.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me to speak just for a minute, but we are in the plans with the new building. The funds for the plans have been allocated. And actually, today, there is another meeting at 2:30 where I'll be with the architects and we're going through, we're getting into some of the nitty-gritty where we need floor drains, that kind of thing. So there are some plans and hopefully they will be finished by end of year and then go out to bid. And then, of course, it has to come back to the counties for the funding for the actual building. We are very happy that you have continued to fund our needs for this new building and we're appreciative of anything that you do for us, so thank you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to ask, answer any.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Dr. Ronika, thank you for your, your commitment as you began your journey here with our counties. And again, 1%, I just want it noted.
1%?
I mean, that's.
Well, we did do some tightening up this year.
That's modest.
There were some over, there were some overestimates. We tightened things up, so we're with the help of, of your staff, so thank you for that and we'll continue to, to do the best we can with those numbers.
And I know the families, we and the. And I know the families, we and the families of the patients that you have to see, will be very appreciative of the new building, so it's very refreshing that today there's a meeting about the building.
Thank you.
And we'll continue on.
Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you, Doc.
Anybody else? Welcome. How are you today?
Hi, good morning. I'm Heather Parker with the Guardian Ed Lightem office. I just wanted to share my overwhelming thanks. You guys have always been extremely supportive. We do represent your only red on the list, but we are good stewards of every dollar, and we are just very appreciative. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you for what you do. It's, it's a, it's a lot to...
It's a tough job.
It is, we appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, under state agencies? Welcome, Miranda?
Thank you so much. I'm Miranda Swanson, I'm the Health Officer for the Health Department, and all of you are aware, I hope, of the work that we're doing, and the work that you do in partnership with us is greatly appreciated to improve the health of our community. Thank you.
How is the Wabaso office going and the programs there?
We are more than happy to talk about Wabaso, and thank you so much for the opportunity. A couple of you came out to our open house that we had out there on April twentieth. That was, we had about a hundred people that came, it was exceptionally successful. We're doing great nutrition, nutrition education there, we've started a diabetes prevention program, you've, that was mentioned in our budget requests, we're expanding our health education offerings out there. The diabetes prevention program that we've started, we've had about ten to fifteen people that come each week, and that's a great program. We have our senior congregate meal site in partnership with the Senior Resources Association, that's continued to go well. We have started our, WIC program has added a peer breastfeeding counselor out at that site to expand our activity there, that's been well-received. In the coming year, we're planning to do some more work in terms of landscaping at that site to expand our nutrition education. We're planning on adding something that's called a food forest, which Commissioner Fletcher, I know you're familiar with, and it's based, it's really self-sustaining, but able to really expand what we're offering in terms of nutrition to that community. As you know, we host the county's food pantry at that site. Alois Harden of my staff has done an exceptional job there to really expand that, it's a choice pantry, and so, that's something really to see, because that's changed markedly from what it used to be, and the residents out there that we pull from multiple communities are greatly appreciative.
Well, I think that what you're doing out there is fantastic, just the congregate meal opportunity alone to provide some of that interaction to our seniors on a daily basis, and have a place for them to, to kind of check in with each other and have that social aspect, because I know there's, there's a lot that live alone, and just having the services offered to that area of the county, because there are some access-to-service constraints there, so glad to hear it's going well. Commissioners, if you haven't been out there to see it, I know Commissioner Fletcher and I were there, it's, the programs that they're offering and the collaborations they have with some of the other nonprofits is, is amazing, and it's great to see life in that building, so appreciate you guys doing that.
Thank you so much. It's, I, I did not mention the department, Recreation Department, I know the county is also providing services out there. I've greatly appreciated your support and the commission's support to provide us funds to be able to renovate that building. We removed the asbestos flooring that was at that site through the department, and we added new flooring throughout the site. It's, it's such an important location, both for the county and the Health Department, to be able to bring services to that area where it's transportation disadvantaged. Thank you so much.
Building has great, great history.
Absolutely.
It continues to be enhanced. We appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Specifically, the staff. Those programs don't always go so well, so well-run, and between the controls that are enacted and distribution and the attendance, hats off to, to, to the staff.
Thank you, and you are...
They're doing very well.
You are very right, Commissioner Fletcher, the staff, the two primary staff that are at that location, Alois and Alicia, have been working there for many years, they're a trusted source in that community, and that is what helps make us so successful there, and your support.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else under state agencies?
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
On the slide and on the sheet, it's a different amount for the state attorney and the public defender.
On the slide and on the sheet, it's a different amount for the state attorney and public defender.
Is this correct, what's on the screen? I'm doing what's on the, it just looks like it's making a difference on page twenty-one.
It might be because they're funded through multiple funds.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're also going to be a portion in special revenue in the one forty, one forty-one, one forty-two.
Yeah, okay. As long as it's, what's on the screen, we're a portion.
This is in total.
This isn't the total, this is the, this is the total, and on page twenty-one, it's just the, the general fund.
Fifty-four, about versus back here, it's just different when everybody...
Special revenue portion.
The special revenue portion, is that...
There's those two, okay.
Okay. Other questions, Commissioners?
Oh, we could...
No? All right, then we will move on to non-departmental.
Okay. So, the first up is economic development, as, again, the, the county has a contractual relationship with the Indian River County Chamber of Commerce to serve as our economic development, our formal economic development organization, and we provide funding for those services, you know, from marketing to, you know, maintaining our websites, developing promotional materials, recognizing businesses, and then just doing traditional economic development activities such as business recruitment and attraction, and helping, you know, with the, current businesses expand. So, last year, you know, because there is an increase here of sixteen point six percent, but last year's budget, they, it was lesser than they normally had because they had one of the positions, I think their business retention expansion person, that position was not filled, so you're seeing an increase largely predicated upon the fact that they, you know, they will be hiring a person, once Helene, and I think Helene's here, I think I saw her earlier.
Yes.
Eyes in the back of my head, no. They, but, but, so Helene's retiring in December, so they are, will be looking to fill her, her position, and as I mentioned, and in the agency, there's a list of activities they do, we'll get together with our economic development specialists, and then they coordinate and make sure, kind of eliminate overlapping, but kind of make sure that we're kind of covering it holistically. So, the request is for a thirty-three thousand, a hundred and ninety-nine dollar increase, which is sixteen point six percent.
All right. Helene, I know you're here, do you want to say anything about the budget? If not, I do have a question for you.
Okay.
What is, first of all, enjoy, we are very happy that you will be enjoying your retirement, hopefully. Kudos to you, we're all a little jealous, but with that, what is the process that the chamber's going to go undertake to find a replacement, or the timeline? Is there going to be any overlap between you and that person, or are you involved in that at all?
We've revised the job description, by the way, for the record, Helene Castle-Tine, Economic Development Vice President at the chamber. We revised the job description for the new ED Vice President, and that will probably start getting advertised here shortly. It will probably take a while, I mean, there's not a lot of us out there. We hope to keep, get someone from Florida, or at least someone who is familiar with Florida rules and regs, and Florida business environment and things like that. I've been talking to my counterparts in Florida and throughout the southeast about, hey, there's a possibility to move to Vera Beach, you know, so trying to get the word out to my colleagues, but I would suspect that that position will probably start being advertised in the next couple of months, either through, you know, social media platforms, or through other organizations like the Florida Economic Development Council, or even the American Planning Association, and, and again, it's word of mouth as well, but there will not be an overlap. When I'm done in December, I'm done in December. Although, I will say, I am going to come back as a contract employee just to work on the manufacturing boot camp program.
Okay, I know that is your, your baby, so...
It is my baby, yeah, so, but I will only be focusing on that program. So, hopefully, we'll have someone in place early in the year, January would be ideal, excuse me, would be ideal, but I, I'm not sure that that's going to happen, but I hope it's, you know, in the early stages of twenty twenty-five.
Well, as I say, in the hospitality industry, don't be afraid to poach somebody, and if we can help you with that, let us know.
Absolutely, you know it, you know it.
Any other questions for Helene, now that I brought her up here and put her on the spot? No? All right.
John, our, our plan is to have somebody onboard to work with the economic...
And collaborate, yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
To help them, kind of like, ambles down with the on budget and to work them through the process if they want to help come here, what their land use is, how big they can build, what do they have to do, is that, is that correct?
So, and, and we still, I think, need to iron out the specifics, but we do see the chamber continue to, performing the role of the marketing, the advertising, kind of doing some, dealing, working with some of the site selectors in coordination with our, our person, our staff member that would be hired, because getting some of that information would make sense for us, but then there's other requirements in some of these RFIs, you know, for when they're, they're out there seeking a site, it's a pretty big package, and there's some private issues or utilities, FPL, or whatever the case might be, and so, we will work together and make sure, we'll probably revisit the contract to make sure that we're, you know, have clear understandings of our respective obligations and responsibilities.
And we're going to need somebody to work on incentive packages and cultivating, you know, different programs that might be needed to help with their recruitment and retention, on top of just working through the planning processes and, and the different type of needs for when we have larger businesses looking at site selection, or even just incentivizing our smaller businesses, even just the jobs grant program that we have, and, and what goes into keeping that straight. I remember Sasan and Bill Shute used to bring in like giant sheets of, of paper, trying to, to keep all that straight, so the incentives that we have alone, plus what we've been talking about on an Economic Development Council level of, of trying to provide, again, both for our current businesses and for businesses that we're looking to kind of recruit, I think having somebody onboard that can help collaborate and, and build on what the chamber's doing, because Helene and the chamber have done a great job of marketing and, and going to those different conferences and site selection meetings and having those connections, but there's stuff we need to be doing internally, so when they do find somebody, or somebody does approach them, we can leverage, kind of turning that around quicker.
I think it's a great idea, because, I mean, those are all real costs, to somebody that want to come here, the relocation, and what they're going to do, and help expedite that in any way for a business that's coming here, I think that's a great idea. But I, we're going to miss you, but we'll see you around, I hope.
I'll, I'll be here.
Okay.
I'll be in town. I'll be volunteering, I'll be doing Meals on Wheels.
It is fun to volunteer for Meals on Wheels.
I know.
All right, wonderful, thank you, Helene, I appreciate that.
Okay, well, thank you, I really appreciate your continued support of our, of our activities. Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to, I guess, children's services.
This is probably fresh in your memory. So, the total amount awarded is three million, or recommended is three million, twenty thousand, twenty thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars, that's an increase of two hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen over the prior year of it, which is eight point four percent.
Any questions? I feel like we've had seven different agenda items on this particular thing, so we should have kind of hashed it out a million times at this point.
Yeah, the last meeting.
Yep. All right, the two CRAs?
So, the city of Sebastian and Felsmere both have a community redevelopment agency. That's an area where it's, it's very specific boundaries, and it's, I, I do view it as a partnership, because the county's foregoing some of its tax revenue as it relates to the, what happens within that redevelopment area, you know, from whence they establish the base. So, in this case, you know, the Sebastian CRA, they've grown, and, and the amount that they, that would go to them, the tax increment amount would be three hundred and six thousand and sixteen dollars, an increase of twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, or ten percent, and for Felsmere, this year, they, they've grown to sixty-four thousand dollars, or thirteen thousand, seven forty dollars, eighty, seventy-four, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars increase, or twenty-seven point four percent, and this is, you have to do this statutorily, they're an existing agency, we actually have to have this sent to them, I think, by December first, or pay a penalty, so, but it is an investment, it's the county partnering with the municipalities for, to reinvest in an area that has exhibited some, some conditions that would suggest that it could, it could lead to slum and blight if not addressed.
I do have a question, I don't know if Kristin's, or you can answer it. I remember last year, the Felsmere CRA, there was some, last year or the year before, some issue about they hadn't filed something timely, and, do you know what I'm talking about? Is that...
Yeah, those are making...
Yeah, it was a, it was a dispute on the base year value, but we agreed to it, and it, it has been paid, this is the first year that, that increment will be paid.
Okay.
They've exceeded the base value.
Okay, so we're, that's all squared away and moving forward, okay.
And those numbers actually come from the property appraiser.
I thought it was something about, there were some, not on our part, it was on...
Which year to start the basis.
Their part, yeah, okay. Any other questions on Sebastian or Felsmere CRA? No? All right, then we'll move on to nonprofit organizations.
So, our mental health, give me one second here. There's an increase of nine hundred and forty-three dollars from twenty-eight thousand, five seventy-two to twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. United Against Poverty, they're looking for a three point three percent increase, or that's what we're providing, based on the CPI rather, so it's additional four hundred and fifteen dollars for, for a total of twelve thousand, nine seventy-three, and then, two-on-one Palm Beach, you know, again, the CPI three point one-three, which is twelve thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, or an increase of four hundred and twelve dollars. CRA Senior Services, it's a three percent increase for four thousand, six hundred and thirty-seven dollars, or a total amount for a hundred and fifty, eight thousand, one hundred dollars for our nonprofit agencies.
All right, I believe, first of all, Commissioners, any questions on this? I believe there are representatives from the agencies, so I'm going to start with, we'll just work it down, is there anybody here from the Mental Health Association? Oh, I didn't see you back there, Dr. Phil, I apologize.
First and foremost, thank you for your support always, and your dedication to the mental well-being of the residents of our county. We have quite a bit going on at the Mental Health Association, we're actually coming up on our sixty-sixth year, August seventh, so we've been around for quite some time, and we continue to meet the needs and gaps of mental health in our county. A perfect example of that is our Walk-in and Counseling Center, which this largely funds. Anyone can come to the Mental Health Association, get the help they need, no appointment, Monday through Friday, all day long, and, and they do that. That lobby is packed, let me tell you, sometimes I'll get back to the office and there'll be a, a dozen people waiting to be seen, but they're seen quite expeditiously, and by a variety of mental health professionals, so we have counselors, we have social workers, so it's, that is really working well for us. We've expanded a bit, too, we've increased our, a couple of our groups, we have a free support group for anxiety and depressive disorders, and we have a new group also, it's a fifty-five-plus... a fifty-five plus for women's health. So it's more of, I, you know, I'm fifty-two, so I hate to call it elderly, but it's more of an elderly group to deal with chronic pain, isolation, things like that, and that group has really taken off as well. We've signed a lease for the UF building next door, and we have opened the Parent and Child Center, the Mental Health Association Parent and Child Center, and we're not doing that on our own, we're, we've partnered with Suncoast and Tykes for Teens, so lots going on, all good stuff, avoiding a lot of baker acts, which is wonderful because that saves everyone money and time, and that can be quite a traumatic experience for the person themselves, but we do have the highest suicide rates ever last year in this country, and we are seeing that, that's a, that's a, a problem, and it continues to be a problem, but we're managing it well at the Mental Health Association.
Any questions for Dr. Phil?
We appreciate what you do, we appreciate your help with Mental Health Court, and looking forward to the expansion of services with the Parent and Child Center.
Yes, thank you. It's a great program, I love Mental Health Court, it's really, they do a lot of, a lot of good, good work there, Judge Menz is the best.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, United Against Poverty, welcome ladies.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Lindsay Sumter, I'm our grant writer at UP, so I just wanted to say thank you so much for your ongoing support of not only our whole organization, but for STEP, which is what we submitted the grant application for. I just wanted to highlight a few exciting things about STEP, 2023 was an extremely good year for us, it was another record-breaking year for the number of participants and the number of people who found employment in our county through STEP, and this year it's shaping up to be more of the same, excitedly. We have a waiting list for the first time since the pandemic, so people love our program, they know how important it is, and we have continued support from funders like you, as well as our very important employer partners, because we can't do anything without them either. So, once again, thank you so much for your support, and if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them.
No, thank you for what you guys do in the community, I'm happy to, to be a part in that, but I also appreciate how much you leverage across multiple other collaborations with nonprofits, and then just participating, I see Jane back there hiding, but participating on some of our committees, even if you're not a dedicated member, but I'm thinking particularly with AHAQ, I know you're always there and giving good advice from what you're hearing from the, the members of the community, and you guys do serve a population that needs those services, and, and I love how you bring everything together and are just always open to different ways we can make things better, so we really do appreciate your work in the community and, and happy to be able to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions or comments for UP? No? All right, thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Two One One Palm Beach, welcome.
Thank you, good morning, I'm Ty Barnes with Two One One Palm Beach and Treasure Coast, because we cover the entire Treasure Coast and Indian River County. We clearly thank you for your ongoing, continued support of our agency and the lifesaving work that we do in Indian River County. The utilization of Two One One's resources in Indian River County continues to go up year over year, just looking at 2023 annual statistics, we had, it was almost four thousand calls, texts, chats, needs for support, for contacts and communication. If you look at our database of sixteen hundred resources and the utilization via the mobile app and the website, it nearly doubles that from Indian River County. The top two needs that people have reached out to us through that timeframe were, and they were both around thirty percent, were housing and housing insecurity, followed by a close second of mental health and substance abuse. We took almost a hundred suicide calls from Indian River County alone last year, and the numbers are trending upward this year as well. So, again, thank you for your support of our lifesaving work.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, thank you so much.
Take care.
Senior Resources, welcome.
Hi, I'm Chris Stevenson, the Director of Transportation at the Senior Resource Association, I'm talking on behalf of Karen Deagle, she wishes she could be here, she's out of the country right now, so we just wanted to.
Just for her.
Extend our gratitude to the county for the, the funding that y'all are trusting us with this year, you know, we love working with, with John and Kristin every year with this, and, you know, the number of, the number of seniors in our community who need services just continue to go up every, every year, and we're, we're glad that we're able to, to be there for them, and I'll have more to say when we get to the transportation side, but we're just very thankful for the county and the trust y'all are putting in, SRA.
Thank you, we do appreciate the services you provide to our seniors, and I know you also have some collaborations with other organizations, particularly for The Love of Paws and some others to provide other things besides just meals, so love the congregate meals that you're doing, that's such an important part of senior socialization, as we see that isolation really impacting that mental health of our seniors, so.
Absolutely.
Definitely appreciate what you guys are doing, just to follow up on Helene's shameless plug earlier, if anybody is able to be a volunteer for Meals on Wheels, they're always looking for volunteers, you can do one day, you can do multiple days, they will plug you into their system, it's an amazing system, you really just have to pull up, they load you up, there's an app, you don't really have to do too much, so if anybody's got extra time, they could always use the help to reach our seniors. I used to do that years ago, I don't have as much time anymore, but it is a lot of fun, and sometimes you're the only person that those people see on a regular basis, and just the gratefulness there is always heartwarming, so.
Absolutely.
If anybody has time, please help out. Any questions, commissioners, yes?
Yes, I know at one point that, that there was a waiting list for Meals on Wheels, do you know what the status of that now is?
Yeah, so Gabe Pedrero, our CFO, is here, and he'll, he'll answer that.
I would imagine there's always a waiting list.
There is always a waitlist, we are actually, we do have some private funds that are helping with the waitlist, but we're always adding about ten residents in the community, basically a week, so about forty on that waitlist every single month, so yes. It's, it's a very big date.
And they also, I mean, I don't know, for those that don't know, they have a emergency meals program.
That's correct.
For those seniors or, or people that are coming out of the hospital, but that might not be able to cook for themselves, they will bring that on, I think it's what, thirty to ninety days?
It's actually twenty-one days, and then, and then after that, if they, if they need meals, then we'll put them on the waitlist, so that they can continue to get meals. So once they get put on emergency Meals on Wheels, we will do everything that we can for them to continue to have a meal.
And one of the reasons behind that is because if somebody is having surgery and coming home.
Correct.
Having the proper nutrition is so important to that healing process.
Sure, you know, and sometimes they can't cook, you know, yeah, absolutely.
So that's a good program too for seniors, if, if anybody needs to avail themselves of that, or knows somebody that can.
Absolutely.
Other questions or comments? No? All right, we appreciate what you guys do, thank you so much. All right, commissioners, how are we doing? We're good, you want to push through or to the next, maybe do the next section and see where we are at that point? All right, so we'll move on to quasi nonprofit organizations.
Yes, ma'am, shared members of the board, we have several Veterans Council, one being, you know, they are, the recommended increase is five, five thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars, it's a, a total of a hundred and four thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars. You have the Community Transport Coordinator, largely, there's a rollover of COVID-related funds, and that's the one point four, four, five, nine, one million four hundred and fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, that's why there's a decrease. And then we go to the Gifford Youth Achievement Center, the, there is a, the amount is a hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred, and that's about thirty-five thousand five hundred and sixty dollars less. Progressive Civic League, that remains stable at twelve thousand one hundred and eighty-five. The Humane Society, six hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and ten thousand, it's forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, a new contract that will be coming forward. And then we have Treasure Coast Homeless Services, the recommended funding level is a hundred and forty-five thousand, and it's, we've been providing them ninety-five thousand dollars, however, they have submitted, you know, there, for two new programs for HUD funding, one related to domestic violence, the other related to permanent supportive housing, and it requires a match, so there's an additional fifty thousand dollars to meet that match, and with that, I'll turn it back to the board.
All right, commissioners, we will go through these line by line as well, so first up, Veterans Council, welcome ladies, hope you're getting settled into your new location.
We are, we are.
That was quite the ribbon cutting you guys had.
Thank you so much for attending and everyone's support for that. Transportation is one of our biggest programs, it's a collaboration with the county as well as the West Palm VH, West Palm Beach VA Medical Center, and so through the three of us funding that, we're able to make that happen, and that is free transportation for veterans and their caretakers, Monday through Friday to the West Palm VA Medical Center, as well as local doctor's appointments. One of the unique parts of that program is that you could call today and get a ride tomorrow, so it's very accessible, that's important for our veterans, as many of you probably know that navigating the VA can be difficult, and their appointments are often changed with very little notice, and so these veterans need the flexibility to be able to call today and, and go tomorrow, or whatever their change may be. We, I do want to say also for our drivers that the VA does require extensive background check, so they have criminal checks, driver checks, as well as medical, so our drivers are very qualified, as well as just being amazing people, so I wanted to say that. I also just wanted to share that this program has continued to grow and, and will, because the VA, through their change in care, is limiting the use of local doctors for veterans, and so they are being pushed and forced to use doctors at the West Palm VA Center. So we do believe that this program will continue to, to grow, even though there are local doctors in the local CBOC, community-based clinic here, so we appreciate your support, everybody here is always amazing, and we look forward to continuing to serve our veterans.
Fantastic. Commissioners, questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. SRA, do you just want to do both of these?
Yeah.
Both of your line items?
So again, I'm Chris Stevenson, the Director of Transportation at SRA, we just want to thank the county for their contribution to the, the local match for the grants that we get from the federal and state agencies, you know, our, our transportation system is the lowest cost per passenger trip in the state of Florida, it's been that way for five of the last six years, and we're very proud of our transportation program, and love working with Brian and Mark in the NPO's office, love working with Commissioner Lor on the LCB, and Commissioner Ehrman before that, who was the Chair of the LCB, and, you know, I really encourage anyone who wants to learn more about our transportation program, come to one of those local coordinating board meetings where we really dive into everything from where bus stops are going to be, to how many seniors and disabled we're tripping with the community coach, it's just a, a very robust program, and we're very appreciative of the county's support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you guys running one of the lowest-cost bus systems in the state.
Or the lowest.
The lowest, you're absolutely correct, the lowest.
And award-winning.
And award-winning.
That's right.
And still continue to expand services.
That's right, our hours just expanded back in May, we now run till nine PM on weekdays, and in just a few weeks, we're going to start running until seven PM on Saturdays as well, so.
Fantastic.
It's exciting times.
We're doing so good that we have other counties coming to see.
That's right.
How you guys are being successful and seeing how they can replicate that in their counties, so very proud of that, thank you guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, Gifford Youth Achievement Center, is there anybody here from GYAC? No? All right, or the Progressive Civic League? Or the Humane Society? All right, I do know there's somebody here from Treasure Coast Homeless Services, welcome.
Good afternoon, I'm kind of shocked at the amount, because on Friday we were told five hundred thousand, and on Monday we received a call saying it was two fifty, and now I'm seeing one forty-five, so I'm really confused about what I'm supposed to present about. And I'm grateful for the, I'm grateful for the funding, but that's, it's just a communication issue, so I'm just confused at this point. I really wanted to talk about House Bill thirteen sixty-five with regard to our proposal. When I met with each of you, one person said it was bold, one person said it was comprehensive, another person called me arrogant. And so I want to turn that arrogance into advocacy, because every day in Indian River County, we have two hundred and twenty-five individuals who are homeless on, in this county. Every night we have a hundred and fifty who are unsheltered. As we move into House Bill thirteen sixty-five and the regulations and the challenges that were going to be presented to us as your local COC, and in collaboration with the county, I want to be able to ensure that we can address this challenge, because the way the bill is written, there's a lot of ambiguity with the bill at the current time, and so I think the important components that we need to be able to address, won't, we won't be able to meet the need with the, the lower amount of funding. The, the challenges that we have currently, I do have an outreach team, but they're for veterans, so it's a federal fund, I can't send veteran staff members out to work with civilians. So I don't have an outreach team that will encompass Indian River County, I do for veterans, I don't for civilians. It's a different, you know, you can't, I can't mix a, I can't send someone who works with, specifically with veterans when we know, if they're out there, then we have to reassign and try to do something different. We've been working, we've had great collaboration with the Sheriff's Office, with Scott and the team from the, the homeless outreach team that they've developed there, so I'm just really concerned about how we implement this bill as we move forward as a collaboration in the community, and, you know, our goal is always to work with individuals who are on the streets. Just this year alone, I mean, we reduced our homeless count from three forty-one to two twenty-five, so that's a hundred and eighteen people we took off the streets last year in Indian River County with all of our collaborators, but this year we have two hundred and twenty-five, and then from July of last year through June of this year, we housed a hundred and seventy-five individuals, now that's on, mainly in Indian River and in St. Lucie County, and so that was four hundred and seventy-one individuals, about forty-seven percent of that was in Indian River County. So yeah, we did submit a bold application, but I'm here to try to advocate for the individuals who need this, and offer an opportunity to work together with the county to meet the needs of the homeless in our community. Can you go to slide number five? Because it, so, yes, in the bill, it talks about developing a campsite, okay? That's not something that I think would be advantageous for, for the community, I don't think that's what the community would want either, if you were to poll them, they don't want to see tents at a, a specific location, you know? Housing with services is about eighteen thousand dollars a year, and that includes connecting individuals to community partners who provide healthcare navigation, legal services, job training, and other, mental health, substance abuse support, so the total cost, according to the Florida Housing Coalition and the Florida Coalition in Homeless, just for Indian River County, would be five million dollars to develop a, a campsite for this county alone, to serve the number of people that we have that are homeless in this county. That's, that's the number, and that's the, that's, that's, those are the statistics that we have. So, as John indicated, we were fortunate to bring in over three hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in federal money specific to our continuum of care this last year, three brand-new programs, one working with victims of domestic violence, and the other two are working with individuals who are homeless, who, if we are doing outreach to those individuals on the streets, if we have. if we have availability for a slot to place them in, they will get assistance for a whole year with the supportive services that they need in the community, okay? So the, the support for the, the match is, is also appreciated. We've increased our veteran program by a million dollars. A million dollars in one year. So, you know, that is true, it's across, across, across the Treasure Coast. But most of the services that we are providing are in Indian River and in St. Lucie Counties. So with that, I just, I asked for some discussion on House Bill 1365. Working, we are working with your administration and members of the team. But I, I know that each of you had different questions when I was meeting with you privately. And I thank you for taking the time to visit with me during that time period. I'm just really concerned for, for the county's benefit and how we move this bill forward and implement it effectively.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Lor.
I appreciate, and we met Monday, and I'll tell you, you've got some remarkable measurable goals that you've achieved already in the last two years, so I'm very happy with that.
Thank you.
I also was very clear with you on what the budget was with the 50 grand additionally. Please understand, sir, that we as a body make policy and approve budgets. And that is a significant budget. And I think I mentioned sticker shock to you. And we were very relaxed in that conversation. I also encourage you to reach out to municipalities, which for whatever reason, I don't believe you have. Secondly, I think that Martin County is not participating as much as we are. I think that's fair to say. Although you do touch part of Okeechobee, that might be another resource. But please know that we understand your mission and we appreciate it. I don't think the direction that's came down from Tallahassee on the House bill and how exactly each county's going to implement it. We do know there's some dollars coming. I think you mentioned 300,000.
Maybe. We don't know what that number is yet.
Right, but it's going to be split by 67 counties, which we discussed. I think that it's easy for me to say that you have to crawl before you walk. But in the last two years, I want to compliment you on what you've done. And I can assure you that this body here will continue to monitor that and notice that we have a finite amount of dollars that we have to spread out. And we certainly appreciate what you do. And I hope that you're able to reach out to the other entities that I've mentioned and hopefully they can kick in. But I do appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions or comments?
I do.
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Chairman, thank you. Commissioner Lor, well, well-stated and well-put with that. I understand what the state was trying to do, you know, to limit, to help businesses and people of that nature, not to have homeless people camped out in front of their business. It is a deterrent, but we can't continue to stick our head in saying we have to look at what we're going to do about this in the future. And I think Commissioner Lor made some good points that I think, right now, we, all we can do is continue to monitor. I think in the interim, you can, like you said, reach out to some of the cities to see what they want to do because I'm not real sure, and I'm going to ask you, do we, do we know anymore? I mean, what are the penalties if we don't, if we don't do anything? If we, if we did nothing? I mean, where, where are we going with this? Because we can't continue to ignore a House bill. At some point in time, they're either going to do it or figure it was a bad idea and they'll take it away or something. I mean, which they never do.
John, do you want to address House Bill? Is your microphone on?
If the county makes the decision to provide a public encampment site, then you have responsibilities. If the county doesn't do that, there's no affirmative obligation to do other things other than, and, you know, you're not allowed to let them sleep, you know, public camping or sleeping in existing public areas. We haven't designated a camp. I can get with Kathy and we can get an overview of the bill. I know FAC has some resources that they provided. But there's not a, a mandate that we have to designate a site for the purposes of public, you know, sleeping or camping.
Right, and with that, I mean, you have, you've got to have law enforcement present, you have to have your services right there. You have to have facilities. I mean, it's a big deal.
The county would have to find that there is insufficient beds for the homeless people. They would then have to designate a parcel of county-owned land that is not residential, that will not decrease the value of the surrounding properties. You know, that'd be an interesting public hearing. But then you have to supply public services, water, health, substance abuse, and services like that to the area. That area has to be certified by the Department of Children and Family Services. That certification lasts for a year. And then you would have to go through the recertification process all over again. That is, if you go ahead and designate an area that is designated for public sleeping, public camping. Then you have the other part of the law that says that people can't sleep outside overnight in publicly-owned areas. That a complaint would be filed, that the municipality or the county has five days to act on that complaint. I don't know who, if, if, if the police report to the county, there's supposed to be a designated person that they report to. No one knows who that is in the county. None of the other counties at the most recent Florida Association of County Attorneys Association could shed any light on that, nor, I, I don't know if the Florida Association of Counties discussed it at, at their meeting. But it, it is just a real hodgepodge at this point.
We did have a workshop on the House bill and everything you said is basically what was discussed during that workshop. I will say, though, that there is a lack of homeless resources in Indian River County. We do a good job, or our nonprofits do a good job of trying to hodgepodge together housing, emergency housing resources when necessary. But we don't have, you know, an overnight shelter. We don't have some, even a drop-in center for people to go to try to connect themselves with services beyond some of the work that UP is doing and some of the other groups. I know St. Lucie County is looking at the possibility of doing a larger shelter. I think they have a, a shelter program now. I don't disagree that we need to look at what is available and not available in the, you know, moving forward in the future. Because the face of homelessness is not just people living in tents. The face of homelessness is people living in cars in the Walmart parking lot. It's people trying to raise their kids in those cars and going to school, which is impacting their ability to be successful in school. And then, of course, you know, there are people living on private property and, and other things like that that get flushed out from time to time. And there's not really a resource to deal with that. So I don't disagree that we need to start having the conversations, probably on a more comprehensive level, of how we intend to deal with that moving forward. Because that is part of an affordable housing issue. It's part of the mental health issue. It's part of economic development and it wraps so many things into that. And what we are starting to see is senior homelessness. A lot of people think of, you know, just, just middle-aged men, maybe families, that kind of thing. But there are a lot of seniors that are being pushed out of their homes because they're living on fixed incomes and now insurance is going up and, and those types of things. Rent is going up and they're unable to live. So I don't disagree with what we're trying to, the conversation. I do think we need to probably have a better conversation in the future. Related to this particular budget item, though, can you give us a little bit more detail on what the matching, what the grants that you're going for, that these additional matching dollars are, are going to do? The domestic violence one and what was the other one?
So it's to our permanent supportive housing program that actually houses individuals who have dual diagnosis. So they, they maybe have a substance abuse and mental health issue that is, or are being caught and homeless. So one of those two elements will facilitate their ability to receive ongoing rental assistance. Many times, those are individuals who are on Social Security disability. And they may get $800 a month and trying to rent a $1,000 apartment, they can't afford that. You know, we have a growing wave that's coming. It's happening on the West Coast right now where elderly are, and our count is proving it. Because in January, we counted more individuals who were female, over the age of 60, who were homeless. And that was a, like, 20%, 22% increase. And that was in every county, okay? And on the West Coast, people who are on Social Security and can't afford to live, they are now moving into shelters and they've been staying in shelters for two and three years. So if you want to know what that wave, that wave is coming, it's happening. We, we, we have it here. We have seniors who are living in their cars. And, and we do the best that we can, but if they, if they don't meet the specific criteria, and there's some times when we can get someone in that doesn't meet that criteria for permanent supportive housing. And, and that's the state funding we use, you know? So it helps us with our state fund match and our federal fund match. So any money that we, we receive, we use as much match as we possibly can because it brings in more federal dollars as well, so.
Yes, Jane.
Good morning. My name is Jane Snead. Right now, I'm not even talking on behalf of UP, although this kind of does affect it. But I want to put a face to what we're talking about. Just two Fridays ago, June 28th, we had a 72-year-old woman who was sleeping on the concrete outside of United Against Poverty and waiting for us when we walked in in the morning. She had tried to use the source bus, but was physically unable to climb into the bus. She had a walker. She was so dehydrated, so swollen, we sent her immediately to the emergency room and we called Treasure Coast Homeless Services Council. I will tell you that that night, at 6:00 o'clock at night, as the rain and thunderstorms started opening up, I personally delivered her things to the housing that they were able to find for her. We fortunately had a grant from an organization in New York called Gerschner that we were able to pay the funding for that first month. We're out of that funding at, at UP now, too. But what Remy is saying is completely correct. The overwhelming majority of the people that we're seeing coming in who are telling us that homelessness is their issue is overwhelmingly, right now, seniors that are just being forced out of their housing because they can no longer afford to live. So literally just less than two weeks ago, this is exactly the situation that happened right next door.
It's everyday occurrence. Yeah, so.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Remy, when, when we all met, I think you pointed out some comments. I'm, I'm proud to say that none of those comments came from my office. I, I took the opportunity to suggest an alternative direction. And unfortunately, I know that you attempted, but the very next day, that resource has dried up. It may reopen and I'm perfectly willing to support. And hopefully, two others may do the same thing, too. Should that arise, and that will alleviate a lot of pressure on the system. We also have to ensure that, that option is allowable and doable in Indian River County per building standards. But I, I will say that I understand, but by the same token, during our conversation, you did point out not only the House bill, but the legal ramifications, which have not been directly aligned with what our county administrator has been able to unravel from the direction. Our county attorney has been able to unravel from the direction.
We're all hearing the same thing.
Often, oftentimes, you know, at the onset, I, I saw your grave concern. And it was near panic mode. I, I understand that and I appreciate. And hearing that information, it was concerning. But after the unraveling, it doesn't sound like we're into the full tango mode. But we, we do have concerns and we will be happy to revisit should this changes in any way. But I, I don't foresee, as one commissioner, that we would be looking at an encampment as per se just yet.
That's not one thing that we'd recommend anyways.
Right, and, and we discussed that.
Yeah.
And you wanted to shy away from that. I know the, the sheriff has stepped up to the plate about Operation Frostbite and, you know, that alleviates some of the concern because that could have legal ramifications.
Right.
But as far as day-to-day, I, I don't see the initial concern that was near apparent then. You, you agree?
I, I don't agree. I think you're going to get sued. And I'm just trying to help you in that process from that happening. So we have a better responsive process, so. And I think the state attorney will be the one to sue you because you don't have a plan.
Well, I, I disagree with that.
Because the bill allows for the state attorney to sue the counties that don't implement a process.
Well, I don't think it's criminal, but second is...
And, and it could be, you know, from the state perspective, it should be a...
But furthermore, we need to wait and see the dollars that come down from Tallahassee. Because we don't know.
Understood.
There is, for our staff, a bunch of information on the Florida Association of Counties website. They have a, a whole portal related specifically to this bill. And I know there's a new Supreme Court ruling that just came out a couple of days ago dealing with public camping. So I think one of the things we just need to do is make sure we're staying on top of it as it's ever moving, related to the House bill specifically. But I, I do think as a, as a commission in the next, in the future, we need to start having a conversation about overnight sheltering and homeless resources because it's, it's kind of missing from the equation. We rely heavily on our nonprofits, which, which is fine. But if we're going to rely on that, we need to kind of help them be able to provide the services or the resources needed to get people out of homelessness and, and into more of a sustainable situation. I share your concerns about the aging population. And what's happening is you have two-income families and since women outlive men, the husband passes away and a lot of times, he was the one, his pension or his retirement, that was relied upon to bring those resources to the table and now it's not available. And, and what do you do as a 72-year-old woman that doesn't have any options? So I don't know what the answer is today.
Sure.
But I do think that we need to continue to have those, those conversations.
We would be happy to facilitate a homeless workshop for the board and include all of the homeless providers in the county.
And that might be a good place to start, just so the board has a little education on what is available, what's not available, and what the state of our county related to homelessness looks like.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
To clarify...
Yes.
To clarify, resident of the county, an owner of the business located in the county, or the Attorney General may bring a civil action to enforce this. Attorney's fees and court costs would be included if they, if one of those entities prevail. My question for you, Remy, is, is this money easier for you to use? You talked about a bucket of money for veterans, a bucket of money for something else. Is this kind of money easy to use to help out the 72-year-old, two-year-old person that you can get immediate attention for her?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, there was a call and it appears to me, our staff did look at the funding request that was submitted by the, by Treasure Coast Homeless Services. The actual request was only for 345, but their total program budget was $500,000. And their requested increase was 250. thousand dollars and their requested increase was two fifty. And we recommended the fifty, the additional fifty thousand dollars because of the HUD program, two programs. And then there was just, there wasn't really a lot of information other than, it just, the, the, the second request was the additional two hundred thousand dollars, what was going to fund to hire two additional positions as well as fifteen percent designated administrative costs. So it's, we're not saying it's not important, we're trying to, you know, help with the additional funds for the HUD grant. And I think a future conversation workshop would be, you know, in order to, before we kind of try to fund all that.
Okay.
And it's, as you can see, it's, it's the largest increase, you know, for our, you know, quasi nonprofit organizations. It's a fifty-two point six percent increase.
Okay. And I do know that Kathy Copeland has been on top of the legislation as it moves forward, working with all the different state groups and trying to find out exactly how we maneuver through that. So we'll include her in that update and, and go from there. So we'll get together in the next little bit and, and look at what a homeless workshop would look like and we can go from there.
No worries.
All right. Thank you so much. Any other questions, commissioners? No? All right. I know that it is noon. We do have a time certain of one thirty for SWID, but there, I believe, is a couple of people in the audience that are here to talk about a specific fund. Maybe ladies, are you here for TDC?
Yes, we were told to be here this morning, so.
Do you
Yvonne might be speaking.
I, do you guys want to take their comments on TDC now so you don't, because we're going to break for lunch here in a second and I don't want you to have to necessarily come back. Because the afternoon is, is more departmental and not that this hasn't been super exciting, but you need a break? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, we'll come back, we'll handle whoever's left here and then we'll take a lunch break and come back for the one thirty time certain. Does that work for everybody? Okay, five minutes.[744.17]
I understand, we're good? Okay.
We're good. I understand the budget has already been approved.
Yes ma'am.
The only information I would...
You're going to have to go come to the microphone.
Good afternoon. I'm Yvonne Steer from the Cultural Council of Indian River County, Board Chairperson, and I just want to thank you all for all you do. It's tremendously enlightening for me to sit here this morning, even though we weren't supposed to be here, to listen to all of what you do and the extensiveness of our county and what is happening here. So the only thing I would add is all of what we have done since the TDC meeting to improve who we are and how we gather data. So just know that the comments that were made that day have assisted me, particularly as the Board Chairperson, to take the initiative to get some analytics in place, improve our website, really reach out in the community, work with the chambers, and made friends with Robyn. And I'm new in my spot, but I'm not new in the community. I've been here a while working with the Veterans Council, which is a huge thing that we have been doing around the memorial, the tribute. So I just wanted to add all that to what was said today. It's incredible, truthfully, what we do here in this county, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your words, and I understand as Chair of the TDC, we heard as much about the Cultural Council. We had heard the year prior, a very similar statement.
Thank you.
Yes.
And please understand that the Commissioners, and particularly Commissioner Fleischer,
And it was unanimous to make the decision that was made, that was a strong recommendation
is our TDC guru, and he's always available for any type of information.
I'd like to be able to give you information through the course of the year so that you can see what we're doing to improve the arts and culture in this community, in this county, because it's important. I mean, I think a lot of healing happens as a result of the arts, so.
Thank you.
Always available. to this commission.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be well.
That was the juncture.
Thanks, now. Yes.
All right.
And again, there were some shortfalls.
It looks like the rest of our audience is our staff and Ms. Zudan. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and take a call for a lunch break. We will come back at 1:30 for our SWID Time Certain, handle that, and then pick back up
It's very encouraging that you took note as to what was said that day, that you've
where we have left off. Does that sound good to you guys? Awesome. All right. (applause) (end of transcript)[178.98]
made the changes.
Commissioner Fleischer, I can't tell you how impacted I was from your comments, and I would not want to see the Cultural Council dissolve.
No, no.
We have taken another budget cut from the state as well. So we're taking the initiative to move forward, and I really did take in all of what you all said, so.
It sounds like you did. If you made those changes, that you took them as strong recommendations as opposed to criticism.
Strong recommendations, absolutely. Yes.
Which is very important. I think that it may bode you very well in the future hearing.
Okay.
In addition, the insult was that the state has pulled back as well now.
It was a strong impact.
And you got a double hit.
We did.
That's very unfortunate, but it sounds like you're in recovery mode as we speak.
I'm a strong girl, I have a strong heart, and there's a lot of loving people around us who care about us, and I know that. So thank you all for what you do, and we appreciate what we'll receive this year from...
And please understand that the Commissioners, and particularly Commissioner Fleischer, is our TDC guru, and he's always available for any type of information.
I'd like to be able to give you information through the course of the year so that you can see what we're doing to improve the arts and culture in this community, in this county, because it's important. I mean, I think a lot of healing happens as a result of the arts, so.
Thank you.
Always available.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Be well. Thanks, now.
All right. It looks like the rest of our audience is our staff and Ms. Zudan. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and take a call for a lunch break. We will come back at 1:30 for our SWID Time Certain, handle that, and then pick back up where we have left off. Does that sound good to you guys? Awesome. All right.
All right, we are going to call the budget workshop back to order. We do have a time certain public hearing on the solid waste disposal district. So, we will start.
Talk slower.
With. Solid Waste. Solid Waste Disposal District, otherwise known as SWDD, which covers sanitary landfill and recycling. I'm doing a, I'm trying to stretch.
Yeah, so we can start.
Okay, go.
So, Madam Chair, members of the board, solid waste disposal district. The landfills budget proposed for this year is eighteen point five million, almost eighteen point six million. It's a decrease of just over seven point two million or twenty eight one percent. Some of the decrease, most of the decrease is last year they had eleven point nine million dollars in capital. And this year they have two point six million dollars in capital. So you can see right there, that's one of the reasons. But there are some things that they're going to be undertaking in addition to hiring some consultants and engineering services. They will be, there's some projects related landfill operating, three hundred seventeen thousand dollars. There is a reduction for hazardous household waste for ninety seven. The leachate evaporator expenses, the expectation is a hundred ninety one thousand dollars more this year. And then landfill closure costs, we know that continues to be initially monitored, but that's going to be about one point seven million dollars. On the recycling side, it's about a million dollar increase going from ten point nine to eleven point nine, million twenty seven, five hundred seventy dollars to be exact, nine point four percent. Yardways processing, as we know, we just had these agenda items, with yardway processing going up five hundred forty six thousand. Republic Services at the convenience centers up two hundred thousand. There is also, one of the projects beside, is the fire burn cameras at the three conven- convenience centers. That's four hundred thousand dollars. So, the other item on this is the, the rate. And, and we evaluated, you know, with, with the consultant, what is the appropriate rate that needs to happen to ensure that we're kind of putting on a financially sustainable path? And we evaluated a six percent rate increase, an eight percent rate increase, and a ten percent rate increase. And we looked at it over the five-year period. We found with the, the six percent rate increase, there's three specific years, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, where we're going below at, you know, the, the number that we ideally want to be at, thirty three percent?
For fund balance.
For fund balance. So for twenty six, we'd be at nineteen percent. And then for twenty seven, thirty percent, and then twenty nine, twenty eight percent. If you look at the ten percent, there'd only be one year, which is twenty six, and be at twenty four percent. So, we didn't think either of those, so we kind of cut it in the middle because on the third year end, for FY twenty six, an eight percent increase, we would only be at twenty one percent for fund balance. But all the other years, we'd meet the targeted goals. So we kind of took the middle road, we felt that was the, the most responsible way to do it versus going straight to a ten percent because it only achieved about a three percent difference. And you have three years to make up that amount. And when you look at the last three years of the five-year projection, you know, your fiscal year twenty seven is thirty four percent, and then twenty eight is fifty one percent, and then back thirty four percent. So with that, the recommendation was to recommend the residential ERU and the commercial waste generation unit to be increased by eight percent. And the readiness use fee, that, it's a three dollar and fifty four cent increase, and that's nine point six percent.
All right, commissioners, any questions, comments, concerns?
John, how does this relate to the January first twenty five contract with Waste Management?
So, well, the, the contract doesn't begin till October first, it's separate from this.
Correct.
So, it doesn't impact this.
Talking about those other years.
The projections, that you're projecting.
Oh, yeah. If you recall, this, this, this also, last year, we had issue when they did the actual model as it related to, they plugged in the wrong number, the, the consultant, it was just, it was an error. We had to adjust then. And this is essentially kind of a continuation of that because of the, the faulty, putting that wrong number in the fund balance. They, they, they asked for a number, and they got the number they asked for, but that's not the number they needed. They needed, we needed the unassigned fund balance, what was available to spend. So that's why.
This is relevant to us going forward in ten one of twenty five as well?
I'm sorry, say that again, sir?
Is it, these rates are going to be relevant to going forward?
Yes.
After October one twenty five?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Yes, these are all tied to the, the this year's bud, upcoming year budget ten one.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? This is listed as a public hearing, so I have to, okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing on the solid waste disposal district. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Being none, we'll close the public hearing. All right, we're not taking a vote or anything.
Bill, they just do, they need to make a motion?
We just, we do it all at the end.
It's, there's one vote today, and.
That's what I thought.
We do that time certain, in, in case there is any public that wishes to attend, we give them a free and equal opportunity to be here.
Well, opportunity provided, and we will move on, or actually move back.
We're good.
To street lighting districts. You know what that means?
It's a per parcel, and it's a per acre, and, you know, a lot.
It's not my turn.
And it's not my turn. Is it, is it your turn, Joe?
I did it for like, three years in a row.
I think I did it most recently, but.
I don't care.
I'll do it, whatever you want.
Why don't you flip a coin?
Just remind me how it goes.
Well, traditionally, it's our newest commissioner, which would be Commissioner Lohr. And you just have to read the description and the per parcel acre assessment. We won't make you read the difference since some of them are actually going up this year.
Okay. So that, yeah, correct me if I'm wrong. So the proposed street lighting district assessment rates for Gifford, current year, twenty one dollars, ex fiscal, twenty one dollars, a difference of zero, and that is per parcel acre lot. I'm going through all of these? Okay.
Yeah, but you don't, you can just say, like, Laurel Wood, forty four dollars per parcel acre, Rock Ridge.
You got it. Laurel Wood, forty four dollars per parcel acre, Rock Ridge, three dollars, stays the same parcel per acre. Bureau Highlands, forty seven dollars, increase of four dollars per parcel acre. Purpose Point, seven dollars per parcel per acre, zero difference. Laurel Court, forty eight dollars, increase of two dollars parcel acre. Terra Linda, forty eight dollars to fifty five dollars, seven dollar increase parcel per acre. Bureau Shores, thirty four dollars, increase from twenty nine for seven dollars parcel per acre. Bureau Shores, thirty four dollars, increase of five dollars parcel acre. Zora Park, thirty two dollars, increase of three dollars parcel acre. Royal Ponciana, fifty one dollars, increase of seven dollars parcel per acre. Roseland, three dollars, an increase of two dollars parcel per acre. Whispering Pines, twenty five dollars, increase of nine dollars parcel per acre. Mooring's, nine dollars, which is flat parcel per acre. Walker's Glen, twenty dollars, flat parcel acre. Glendale Lakes, forty dollars, parcel acre flat. Floral, Florton Beach, forty five dollars, which is flat parcel acre from last year. Westwood Bassett, eighteen dollars, parcel acre flat from last year. Oceanside, I see an asterisk, fifty one dollars, flat parcel acre from last year.
Per lot.
Per lot.
Charge.
Charge, correct. Thank you. Deer Osslet Park, twenty dollars per lot, flat.
Per?
Per acre.
Lot.
He said per lot. We're just trying to confuse him at this point.
He is.
Don't worry, Commissioner Lohr.
He's good at it.
Got your back. All right.
Do you have a?
Awesome, you have a question? You actually have a question on this?
So what are we going to do in Mooring's? No, I'm just kidding.
I do have a question. Why the big difference in some of them?
Why the difference?
They catch it all.
Why the difference in some of them is the question?
Some of them are big, and some of them are no change at all, why the difference?
Because the, the changes in electric rates in some of them are more impactful in others. So if we had a higher rate that could support the increase in electric, then we kind of left it. But if we look like we were starting to use cash, we can't do that. So we had to raise the rates in some.
Are we, I know, like, FPNL manages these lights. Are we, again with them, are we thinking about in the future going to, like we are with our ball fields, going to something more efficient than like, what's in front of my house? I mean, is it something, I mean, or is that entirely up to FPNL?
I'm not sure. I, I know Public Works handles the coordination between FPNL and the.
I mean, there's, the, the lighting thing has come such a long ways.
We can reach out to Michelle, Murell.
These are just the sodium, you know, these are just straight sodium bulbs, off the orange glow. I just didn't know if there's something in the future that we need to.
We can reach out, I mean, I, I think regardless, they'll still gonna, we'll, we'll, the owners will still pay. But if it's something that, over the long term, maybe decreases cost.
I mean, it's nothing urgent or serious right now, I'm just, I was just, that just caught my eye, that somebody jumps from thirty eight to forty four, or somebody jumps from.
Well, in some of these, have more lights than others. So the impact of the electricity going up is going to impact that district more than some of, like, some of the other districts.
In my neighborhood, it's been forty dollars for fifteen years.
Yeah. And when they put these in place, you kind of assess the price of this light going in, and the electric, and, and offset that over the course of a couple of years. And then it usually either drops, so you're just paying the electric. Or in this case, you know, some of them have been in place for quite some time, but they're going up because electric's going up. And then sometimes people want more of the streetlights. And then that, that brings it back up, but.
Or they change, the Mooring's wanted different lights.
They wanted fancy lights.
FPNL is converting a lot of the, the lights as they harden some areas in the county, specifically Sebastian. They moved on to the, the LED lights, which are lasting longer, and they emanate more light at a reduced cost. So they, they are doing that, I just don't know how they earmark an area.
We'll follow up on it.
All right, this is the most robust discussion in my tenure here on the street lighting districts. So, I appreciate that, I found it very informative. Thank you, Commissioner Lohr, for leading us in that. I think it was at your leadership of going through these.
Hope to do it against them.
All right. Moving on to other MSBU, of which we have two.
So, there's two MSBU's, Missionable Service Benefit Unit. You have the Vera Lake Estates, which is per parcel acre. It's remaining at fifty dollars. And then you also have the East Gifford Stormwater MSBU, which is per parcel acre, and it's remaining at ten dollars.
Fantastic. Any questions on that? Nope? All right, enterprise funds.
All right, so first we have the golf course. And that's an increase of five hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars. Rounds continue to increase at the golf course as well as net income. And this budget does contain a forty six dollar increase on the eighteen hole round seasonal charges, and ten dollars on ID cards. And those increases should generate approximately five hundred and fifty thousand extra dollars to help fund the clubhouse for next year. Next, we have the building department, an increase of ten point two percent. This increase is due to the addition of a chief building inspector, chief plans examiner, and the additional cost for supplemental building inspectors. Next, we have utilities, a two point three million dollar increase or three point seven percent. This budget includes ten new positions as well as funding for the integrated master plan John had mentioned earlier. That's one point five million dollar increase of that budget. The next three lines there for impact fees are kind of to be considered collectively. What we have going on here is, the first line for impact fees, historically, we had combined the water and sewer impact fees into one fund. But going forward, we're going to split those out, track those separately. So we've created a new fund for water impact fees and a separate new fund for the sewer impact. So we've created a new fund for water impact fees and a separate new fund for the sewer impact fees.
All right. Questions, commissioners?
I just had one. This year, we got a big shot in the arm at the range, and there was continual talk about entering into the enterprise zone of sorts. And I wanted to know if we can anticipate seeing the range on this list as well? With the golf course.
I don't think we're there yet. The shooting range?
I believe there was some non-read numbers there. And I thought that we were looking at moving it into.
The shooting range doesn't currently bring in enough revenue to cover the expenses, and enterprise funds cover those. But I'll let mine guess.
Kristen's on it. I mean, it's early yet in our.
Still early on the.
We have a significant impact by the private contract on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, but it's not.
It's still not enough?
I haven't shown enough experience yet, from a financial perspective, to rely on it. But it is getting there.
Okay. Good, good. It's encouraging. I know that every couple of years, we've talked about it. It was getting close. And then we do an enhancement renovation, new improvement, and it doesn't quite get there. It's been.
Operationally, we're there, but it's just the capital projects that have mounted over the years.
And the wildfire didn't help.
Insurmountable.
Yeah, we got set back with the wildfire.
Yeah. Wildfire and capital project management.
All those pretty stands that you were talking about.
That's only, that's why you can see them, because of the wildfire, so.
Yeah.
Permitting also.
From a silver lining side.
It does slow it down.
So the projects and, you know, the improvements, along with the maintenance, like repairing the baffles. So they kind of all hit at once, so we're not there yet, but we're gaining on it.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Other questions, commissioners? Comments? Good? All right. We will move on to internal service funds.
All right. First, we have fleet management, an increase of $177,502. We're up 4% there. This increase is mainly due to an upgrade to their computer software system faster that they used to track their vehicles and their maintenance with. Next is risk management. The budget is $9,527,871. This is a roughly $1.1 million increase, or 13%. The budget includes a new safety and compliance specialist. We had had a position that did that task before the downturn, and we had not gotten to add it back. But we are happy to add it back now and moving forward, have more presence out in the field to ensure that our crews are wearing the hard hats and the seal-toed boots, and they have all the training that they need when they're operating certain equipment in trenches and so on and so forth. We're also increasing basically all of our lines of insurance. The BCC did approve that renewal a few months back. There's a 10% increase in our insurance rates. Employee health insurance is the next fund, $33,483,600. Sorry, $483,648, a $1.4 million increase, or 4.4%. This increase is due to the increase in the clinic costs. Also, we have an increase in our pharmacy claims and our insurance claims costs. However, this year, we are not proposing any increase in the employee or the employer premiums, as the fund continues to perform very well. Lastly, we have information technology. The budget is $5,945,081. This is an increase of $358,365, or 6.4%. And the largest change there is that we are adding an additional cybersecurity technician to ensure that our cybersecurity is in place as it should be.
Questions? All right. We will move on to miscellaneous funds.
All right. So first, we have traffic improvement fees. So this Fund 102 is going down to zero, and that is because those are the old traffic improvement fees, where we had three districts. The new traffic improvement, I'm sorry, traffic impact fees, we have the two districts. That's the Fund 104 that you see. So our goal is to spend down the balance in Fund 102 and just get rid of that fund going forward. Impact fees, Fund 103 and Fund 104, the large decreases there are just due to the capital project fluctuations from year to year. Any unspent funds that we have from a project from the prior year will be rolled over. Rental assistance, an increase of $61,007. That's just the vouchers that we receive. Secondary roads construction, the budget is $6,080,832, a decrease of $939,75. That's because last year, we budgeted for the Ozlo Park paving project, and obviously, it has not been completed. So we'll roll over those funds into next year. Fund 112, special law enforcement fund, is going down to zero. That's because we budgeted those funds as we received them, and that's handled via budget amendment through the fiscal year. Tree ordinance fines, the budget is $370,000. This is a decrease of $200,000. That's due to, in '23-'24, we had budgeted $200,000 for the Gifford Customer Convenience Center landscaping project. And again, if that project does not complete, those funds will be rolled over into the upcoming '24-'25 budget. Tourist Development Fund, the board has already voted and approved the TDC's recommendation for those TDC agencies. We did propose level funding from a tourist tax perspective. However, there is a slight increase there of $24,791, because we are earning more interest in the funds. 911 surcharge fund, the budget is $1,107,290, an increase of $982,737. This is due to the 911 system refresh, the PSAP improvements that took place in the current '23-'24 budget year. Drug Abuse Trust Fund, the proposed budget is $50,000. The decrease there is in other professional services account. Next, we have ship, quite a large decrease there. Proposed budget is $1.4 million, and the decrease is $2.7 million. We don't have much control over that. It's just our state funding, whatever they give us is what we take for that year. Lastly, MPO, proposed budget is $995,245. The increase of $168,903 was a result of the bike plant update, which will be completed in the current fiscal year. So next, we have the Native Uplands Acquisition Fund. The proposed budget is increasing by $40,000 to $140,000. And this additional project is the lost tree conservation improvements. Coastal Engineering, another significant decrease there. The proposed budget is $2238,498, or a $20.5 million decrease. That's just because sectors three and four are budgeted in the current year. Whatever portions of that project don't get finished in the current fiscal year will be rolled over into '24-'25. NSP 3, level budget of $10,000. Florida Boating Improvement Program, proposed budget is $531,400. The decrease there is due to the environmental learning center dock replacement that we have in the current fiscal year. Disabled Access Program, the proposed budget is $5,215, which is a decrease of $64,785. That's due to Jose Schuman Park improvements that we have budgeted in the current year. Intergovernmental Grants, proposed budget is $590,982. Again, the commission just recently approved those grants, and that's just a fluctuation in the amount of funding that we receive. Dory Slasberg Driver Education, no change there, level funding of $49,000. The next two funds, ARP and CARES, are, the budget is zero for next year, and that's because we're not sure what we'll have left at the end of this fiscal year. So the way that those are handled is by a rollover next fiscal year, whatever the remaining balance is. We just put that account in the, put that amount in the account going forward. Fund 141, Court Facility Surcharge Fund, level funding there. I will say that the state attorney and the court administrator had increases in their budget. These next three funds are kind of considered together. Fund 141 for the additional court costs, and 142 for the court technology fund. Commissioner Irman, this was your question earlier on, on why the numbers didn't tie. It's because we had to fund $610,584 of those budgets out of the general fund, because this Article 5 funding no longer supports the amount that we're required to fund those agencies. Land Acquisition Series 2006. This budget, again, is going down to zero. It's a decrease of $955,675. That is because we are planning on spending all of those proceeds in the current year. They're programmed in the CIE to be spent. And again, this is the 2006 land acquisition bond. And the reason that we have funding here is because we had a grant that we received, and we have taken some time to spend it. And then lastly, we have the opioid settlement fund. The proposed budget is zero, a decrease of $376,415. And that is because we budget the funds each year as we receive them.
All right. Any questions on miscellaneous funds? Nope? All right. Debt service capital projects.
All right. So first, we have the Dodger Bonds. There is no change in the budget here. That's the $500,000 debt service payment that we have on those bonds. They are serviced by the funding that we receive from the state each year, and they will be paid off in 2031. So no county funds go to paying that debt service. Next, we have, these are the new land acquisition bonds, the Series 2024, that we're closing on. Well, we just closed on at 10:30. Yes? So this is a portion of the debt service that we will owe. The millage that John mentioned earlier, the 0.0639, is what it will take to fund that debt service payment of the 1.8 million. Next is the Jackie Robinson Training Complex. The proposed budget is $413,600. Another large decrease here of almost $3.5 million. That's due to the board-approved amendments to that contract that we've had. We've given them additional money for Holman Stadium, and then most recently, for the plumbing upgrades. This $413,600 is the capital and maintenance that we're responsible for, 200 for each. This is the first year of the lease that we are increasing it by the CPI. So moving forward, you'll see a CPI increase in that number for capital and maintenance.
That is true, but it's also reducing our investment annually from $800,000 to $400,000 under the contract. So we're going in the right direction.
Last year was the first year for that.
Yeah. It's a, it's a, contract's 10 years and 8 months, so we're in the back half now, where we're decreasing our investment.
Awesome. Thank you.
And last, we have optional 1-cent sales tax. The proposed budget is $40,958,509, a decrease of $53.6 million. And again, that's just due to the fluctuation of the capital projects from year to year. And anything that's budgeted in '23-'24 that's not complete will be rolled into '24-'25 at the end of the year.
Awesome. All right. Any questions on debt and capital funds? No? All right. Now we get to go over the random aggregate millage that nobody uses for anything, or that makes any sense, but we have to do it.
The proposed aggregate millage is decreasing by 0.0109 mills, or 1800.7% to 6.1198 mills. And that, which is 0.4217 more than the rollback rate of 5.6981 mills.
Does anybody have any questions on the aggregate millage?
Thank you.
I really hope not, because it doesn't make any sense.
Home stretch.
All right. Recap.
So the proposed overall budget is $524,719,875, a decrease of $107.9 million from the amended FY '24 budget, or an increase of $17.8 million, or 3.5% over the originally adopted budget. The proposed general fund rate, military rate is 3.5475 mills, which is 7.7% above the rollback, rollback rate. The proposed general fund budget is $145.8 million, an increase of 2.4, almost $2.5 million. For the municipal service taxing unit, the proposed military rate is 1.1506 mills, which is 7.2% above the rollback rate. The proposed MSTU budget is 54.4, almost 54.4 million, an increase of approximately 2.3 million. I believe the county, I want to add, I believe the county is being mindful, with this said, on overall budget, of our current day responsibilities and challenges, while remaining focused on being prepared and ready for the future, which is a future, I think, that's bright for the county, and actually, the only thing that can limit us is ourselves. For the transportation budget, the proposed budget is $25,881,729, an increase of almost $2 million. For the emergency services district, the proposed military rate is 2.3531 mills, which is 7.31% above the rollback rate. The proposed budget is $66.8 million, an increase of 3.4, or almost $3.5 million.
An increase or a decrease?
Oh. Sorry about that. Decrease. Lastly, the land acquisition bond, the proposed military rate is .0639 mills, and the proposed budget is $1,770,92.
All right. Commissioners, any questions on any of that? If not, now would be the time to consider any proposed changes to the tentative budget? Or somebody will need to make a motion to adopt the proposed millage rates? Yes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the proposed military rate of 3.54757, which is 77, 7.77% above the rollback rate. And the proposed budget is $145,834,204.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Flesher, with a second by Commissioner Irman. Any further discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have something you wanted to add?
I did have a comment.
Okay.
We, Madam Chair, with your indulgence.
Of course.
You know, we have had some harsh decisions this year, and in the past year. And going forward, our new county administrator has carried us through, and I truly appreciate that, and all the fine work staff does. But, you know, we read this book cover to cover, and we have an obligation to the citizens, to taxpayers, those that are earning enough to get by, but just, that's where it's at. There are others too, but in doing so, we make assessments on some of our nonprofits, not for-profits. And one of the elements in looking at that, as far as I'm concerned, is looking at not only the benefit that that nonprofit does, and I specifically wanted to say this now, as opposed to at any one portion of the budget workshop. But as we're making that decision, if we do our due diligence and are good stewards of the taxpayer dollar, one of the elements we look at is the salary, executive salaries, and the overhead involved. And that's what divides the benefit of a nonprofit, whether they're quasi or not, that makes the difference. And we have hard-earned taxpayer dollars. In reviewing all of the information, and I do read it cover to cover, you can't identify what the actual salaries are. And I feel it's disingenuous to take hard-earned taxpayer dollar and to move that to a 501(c)(3), whatever their endeavor is, when the executives are collecting salaries with commas involved with them, and many zeros and. with them and many zeros involved with them, six-figure salaries. It, 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 just as another element of assessment that we should have, I, I see that some of the input is in contribution or a partial, but overall number. And over the years, we've had, had some examples where people were way up on the charts. I, I recall several years back when I requested a list of them all, the information coming forward was, I, I guess I asked it early on in the year, closer to January, and by budget time, we were still waiting to watch the wet rock dry in the rain. It just didn't happen. There was resistance. We need to know that. I think that's an element that we should have, and that the overhead should be vetted out before this day. It's not a day for topic for the workshop at this point. But again, it was another frustration I had, and I wanted to share it. I hope some of my colleagues feel that same way. And if we have to, we can look at, looking at a policy revision so that we get all that information prior to, because now's not the time to ask for it. As I said, I can recall that it took a good six months to get that information, and that was a previous administration, but, and a hard hitter at that, and it still didn't come out.
Are you talking about the nonprofits and quasi governmental agencies?
Overall, overall.
Like ones that go through TDC and CSAC?
Yes. I think we should have, I think, I think that should be part of the package. I think that all of the 501(c)(3) should be required to do that, to submit that as opposed to an ask and slowly get one here and one there, because for the, by and large, most of the, the, the funding that we allocate is only a partial, but it's, I think it's disingenuous when there are so many commas involved with salaries that we're taking hard-earned tax dollars and applying that to something that may or may not be needed, and we can put the funding where it's needed the most. Not anyone specific, just an overall statement.
I could bring an item back to revise the outside agency funding policy because I think that would be the best route, and we would actually need to make a change to the application to require itemized salaries for 501(c)(3), if that's what you'd like to see.
I think we would be better stewards of the taxpayer dollar and all the endeavors that the, the citizens enjoy from these nonprofits, that we, we would be able to assess it in, in a far more confident manner.
I would also add that, you know, there, there are many other, we'll call your peer counties, our peer counties, that come more near close to funding what our board does, what you all do, and you may look at where some of others fund, they make sure they're funding programs, not people, you know, so that the, the funds are going towards the participants, you know, the, the actual program, not the, not the salaries. Is that your concern?
I, I think that's what, yes. You heard me clear. It was, I, I, I'm surprised with my accent and everything, it just, it just came through.
You have an accent?
Some say I have a slight accent, sir.
Well, we do have that as a requirement for our TDC, so.
Yes.
It, it did grandfather in anyone at the time who we were paying their salaries for, any newcomers we can't pay salaries for. So it would just have to be something the board decides, do you, do you want to change it for everyone who's already receiving funding? Because the outside agency funding policy actually now at this point says no new nonprofits are able to apply.
I, as one individual, would like to see that we are funding the program, not the profit of one other.
So, I feel like I've had too much sugar at lunch, and you're, you're throwing me off here, but, so what I'm hearing, now that it's, the caffeine is kicking in too, is we're going to bring back this policy for discussion point and just to clarify it all the way around?
Yes. That's what I'm hearing, and it could be for future use, but I, I think that I, it was one of my, again, I remind everybody, we get this budget packet on Friday, and then we have Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, and then here we are. There's a lot here, and it would make it easier for any adjustment or thought process, but we should actually know beforehand.
So specifically, we're kind of talking about the nonprofit organizations and the quasi nonprofit organizations and the outside funding, outside agency funding policy.
Yes.
You want to make, you want to make sure that, well, first of all, I know there's no new ones that are coming in.
Correct.
And I thought the policy also kind of capped them, at least the nonprofit organizations.
So they're changing the CPI.
To the CPI.
That's why you saw three point three, three point three or less today.
And no new nonprofits.
That is correct.
Coming directly under the budget. They would have to apply through one of the other grant funds if they qualify. So what you want to do is really make sure that we're not funding salaries within those groups as well, that the money that we're giving to them through our budget process is going specifically to programs. So we're basically talking about the ones that are grandfathered in and changing our policy and dealing with them.
And TDC as well, stop paying salaries in TDCs.
Why not?
Would that need to go to TDC and CSAC for their approval and then recommendation?
I mean, you are the ultimate decision, but it would not hurt to have them make a recommendation as well.
What are your, what are your feelings? Do you want us to just do it ourselves, or do you want to refer, at least for TDC and CSAC, get those boards' input to us and then make an overall decision?
In the past, when we have changed the outside agency funding policy, we have not asked for input from the agencies.
From the committees?
I'm sorry, yes.
From the committees?
From CSAC or TDC.
By and large, CSAC funding is, is for salaries for service.
Well, it's a habit, yes.
Yes. So, I mean, it, it, it should be there just for review, but as far as the others as well, I, I think that we.
Why don't we just?
Know what the executive salaries are for all nonprofits. It makes the decision easier.
So are you, you want the policy to say that we, they have to submit what the salary is, or do you want the policy change that we don't pay salaries, or both?
No. All I want to do is identify the executive and administrative salaries.
Okay.
That operate and separate that from the program dollar amount, and then we can make a better determination, a more informed determination, better stewards of the taxpayer dollar by having that information. It's just another one or two line item.
I just kind of, I was just, I was misunderstanding what you were asking.
I was looking for an abundance of information as opposed to the limited information.
Got it.
That just says, okay, this one gets ten thousand dollars. Well, that, obviously, nobody's working for ten thousand dollars.
Right.
So I, it, that, that's a good one, by the way, if they ask for ten thousand dollars for salary. But I think we should, we should, as far as being good steward for the taxpayer, to know all of that information, okay? If there's three hundred thousand dollars for salaries, or there's ten thousand dollars for salaries.
So you want to make sure when they're submitting for budget, for dollars from us, whether it's through this budget process or somewhere else, that it clearly defines how much of the dollars that they are asking for that are going to go to programs, and how much of it is going to go towards somebody's salary?
That's correct.
Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Kristin's pointing out, it's.
We can't follow it.
In the request.
Yeah, yeah, we can bring it back. I just want to make sure everybody understood what you were talking about.
In the request, there is, on some of the sheets, they actually have, already have the salary information.
Our application has a page for salaries.
Some of them do.
I don't think they're separating it out to the level you're hoping for.
Right.
Like, the one I'm looking at has fourteen, thirteen, and ten grouped together.
So we're contributing something to that salary, but.
You can't tell individually what they are.
Right.
Okay. So you want them individually?
Yeah, they, they should, and that should be released to us.
Okay. Information required on the CSAC applications, too? I'm, I'm just wondering that if we put one more straw in the back of CSAC, you know, as far as making them do one more thing, that they're just going to say, no, no thanks?
Well, that's their opportunity. If that's how they feel.
But I mean, some programs, you know, after-school program, tutoring program, something like that, they don't have any requirements for costs. It is all salary. Are you thinking that this is going to be an all or nothing? Either it's no salaries and we give you money for program, or we understand that part of your program includes a salary?
No, look, I, I, I just believe we would be able to make a better, informed decision being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar by having that information. Look, I, I realize there's a risk counselor, the same way as the legislation has, has required everyone to do a Form Six, so some people are choosing not to run for office because they don't want to expose their salaries to their family. I get it. But guess what? You are asking for taxpayer dollar. You're asking us to make that decision. I think we're entitled to it.
Okay.
That's all. And I'm, you know, if they choose not to apply because they, they don't want to show their salary, I, I apologize, but you know what? If they're good, if they have good intentions and nothing's an anomaly, there should be no problem, and we should be able to justify that to the taxpayer on our decision-making process.
Good.
Okay. So y'all can regroup and mull over that and bring something back at a future date, and, but there's some direction there, and then we'll have a more robust discussion for moving forward.
I'm not looking to be invasive, I just want clear optics so that we can make informed decisions and be able to answer any and all. We represent the public.
Awesome. Okay. Anything else from you guys before I get to the end of my spiel?
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Of course.
First, I want to thank the staff, and I appreciate the fluidness of this process. Looking at it from the other side makes a lot more difference to me. One thing that I would add is, and I know the administrators implemented some leadership training and the like, I think there should be a concentration specifically on, on budgeting and procurement of the items that they're going to need. I think the MBAs throughout the year used to drive me crazy, and I think that MBAs are going to come up. There's going to be an emergency, there's going to be this. I get that. I'd like to see a, a slight reduction in that, i.e., the planning from the leaders of this agency should forecast those things and have them in the upcoming budget versus, you know, mid-year, here comes a large MBA, and, you know, which obviously changes the dynamics of when we start and when we finish. I said, that, that would be a good idea. The second thing is, and obviously, that velorem taxes helped this process immediately, and we understand that we can only get those numbers at a certain time. Maybe there's a way that we could work with the taxpayer, or the tax collector, or the tax collector, property praiser, and somehow have some type of foreshadowing ahead of time instead of scrambling at the last minute. Furthermore, just because it comes in at ten percent, or whatever, this year, ten point three, I, I don't think that we have to be in a position like, we're getting seventeen million dollars in ad velorem, let's fit this in the budget somehow or another. Furthermore, when you, when you complicate things with our, with our constitutionals, some believe that, you know, they should get a certain percentage of the, of the new ad velorem. And I think those practices have to change because if and when we start to see a reduction in those ad velorem, which we will sooner or later, we're all going to have to tighten our belts. So I think the process should be a little more, a little more forecast in the future. In other words, is there, is there a, you know, a drop-dead mileage or whatever on a fire truck? We know in ten years, we're going to need this, we're going to need that. And I think that practice is happening, but I think we need to be careful with the MBAs throughout the year because that kind of skews where we started and where we ended, and that's kind of hard to explain to our constituents. So otherwise, I think it's a very fluid way that we do business, but I think we can do better. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I just want to tell staff, Mr. Administrator, Kristin, thank you so much for, for your hard work again. This was a very easy budget session. I know the numbers, like Commissioner Lor said, are in our favor this year again, but there will be those times that, that we'll face in the future that may not be as, as lucrative or, or is easy. But thank you for your hard work and keeping the pencil sharp still, and I, as a commissioner, appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
I, I'd like to thank you as well, not only just for coming up with all the numbers, but for the negotiations that go on with the constitutional officers and also with fire rescue. You know, I have the impression that, well, I guess it was a good compromise because neither party was entirely happy with, with what happened. I mean, that was my, that was the impression I was left with today from fire rescue and also from the sheriff. And, you know, short of cutting the baby in half, you know, I think, I think we're doing the best that we can, and you are, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
The only thing, a couple of things that I will say is, just to echo some of the other comments, and I have said this over the course of a couple of years, in fact, I think I said this when Commissioner Lor was sheriff, that I get tired of us always eating last at the buffet table. And we have some major things that we're going to have to do in the future, infrastructure-wise, staffing-wise, planning-wise, and if we continue to take the last bite, we're never going to get where we need to be, when we need to be there. And yet, everybody else is getting where they want to be, when they want to get, actually quicker than they probably need to get there. So it's, it just has, I mean, I've been beating on that drum for a while. I know a couple of the other commissioners have too, but we just have things we got to do. And we have employees we have to take care of, and we have customer service levels that we have to be able to maintain, and we have employee, we have positions we have to fill. So, you know, we provide services across the entirety of the county that are required, mandated by the state, and they're not giving us any funds to do it. Unfunded mandates is the key phrase, so, and they keep going up and up. So I just, whoever's listening, that just needs to be said. And then beyond that, I know in this budget, we are talking about the new Department of Building and Facilities. I know that's included. We've all kind of agreed to that. I would hope that we can go ahead and start making some of those changes and getting ready to pull the trigger on that as we are working through this final budget approval process. So we're not waiting to make those very much-needed changes and reorganization for a couple months. I mean, it's probably something we should have gone ahead and done last year, but as you say, we can only eat an elephant so fast. So.
Bite by bite.
Bite by bite. But I would like to see that, if we know that's where we're going, we can start making some of those decisions and aligning ourselves that way sooner rather than later. With that, I am obligated to make the following announcement. Wednesday, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at five oh one PM, will be our public hearing on the tentative budget and proposed millage rates, as well as Wednesday, September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at five oh one PM, will be our final budget hearing and adoption of the millage rates. So if you haven't had enough budgeting fun today, join us on the eleventh and the eighteenth of September for more budgeting action. And with that, anything else for the good of the order? Yes?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to thank the board. Appreciate your leadership direction, especially want to thank our department directors who worked hard in developing their budgets. They're very mindful of what the needs were, as well as to balance, to balance that need with the, the finite resources that we have. And then I would especially like to thank the, the staff of Office of Management and Budget, because, you know, they, they're critical to this whole process. They've been amazing in supporting myself and then kind of helping me understand some things at times. So I do really appreciate all the staff. It's a team effort. This doesn't happen but for a team, and so we appreciate you and we appreciate the opportunity to be here today.
Yes, our Office of Management and Budget is probably our smallest, yet mightiest, department in the whole county, and we couldn't be as efficient as we are without them. So thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you, team.
All right. With that. All right, with that, oh, go ahead.
Ruth, is this your last budget workshop?
Nineteenth budget workshop, sorry.
This is your last one.
Is, is there anything memorable you'd like to recount? And, this is your first? Congratulations to you both.
Was it all you dreamed it could be?
Yes, and so much more.
Back to the fold.
Very thankful for this job, and I, I enjoyed working for the county very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Thank you for your years of service.
You're going to be here for the hearings in September?
Yes, yes, you'll be here. And it's the first one without Carol?
It is.
I'm, so.
Don't, don't tell Carol that we may just make it through.
I always thought it was Carol the whole time, you see?
Yeah, see, poaching is a good way to recruit people.
Just a little move over the building.
All right. Quickly, before anybody has anything else, we stand adjourned.